1930 Historic Red Barn, the Camp Cozy Point check-in area, a material storage building, three pan about structures, a rolling greenhouse, animal shelter, an outdoor classroom facility. There's also some mobile chicken coops, loofah shed, and some horse paddocks. Not sure if I covered it all, but there's a lot going on in that ten acre area. There is also kind of a lengthy history in regards to land use approvals on this property. So I'm not going to go through all of them, but just point out just a few of them, which include the 2013 BSC resolution, which basically designated that red barn, which is quite visible from Highway 82, as well as two frame houses to the historic register. And then also to note is in 2018, as Jeffrey noted, the P&amp;Z did approve a location and extent review for a couple of structures like the greenhouse. But most of that approval was in regards to regrading for drainage improvements and access and parking areas. So this is a graphic from that review done in 2018. So you can see that it's, there's pretty extensive grading that is proposed to occur. The city has recently submitted an earth moving permit to do that work. And I believe this is actually one of the concerns that was mentioned in the Brush Creek Metro District letter in regards to some stockpiling of material and some heavy equipment, what that was doing, stockpiling. So I believe that that is basically getting, preparing for the work that's going to be done this summer. And I'll let the applicant talk more about that later in their presentation and the timeframe that they're looking at for this first moving permit. So other approvals include a lot of temporary uses and special event permits. So those are permits for things such as the Wrangler hoedown, the Earth Day community events, as well as temporary uses such as a snow dump that the city uses to place snow in the winter. And last year was the first year that the applicant also obtained a temporary permit for the seasonal workforce housing, which was basically one seasonal airstream trailer. I also want to point out that in 2017, the Aspen City Council adopted the Cozy Point Management Plan, which basically provides a general outline for the future vision and goals for the ranch and the action items needed to reach those goals. So that's, it's important to note that that's, that is different than the Brush Creek Master Plan. It's the city's adopted plan for the ranch specifically. So I guess just to summarize real quickly, the current activities on the ranch, they include farm-related apprentices for teens, summer camps for children, school tours for schools throughout the rainforet, and the Earth Keepers program for children, farm park, which is a, which is visitation hours for the public. There's also some toddler and parent programs. A, there's a farm equipment library, which provides equipment rentals to other farmers in the area. And as I mentioned before, there's community and special events that occur. So the applicant is now proposing to basically continue, but also expand upon these current, these current activities and to develop structures to support these current and expanded activities. Specifically, this entails improving an access, agricultural access road shown here to the south, which we'll talk a little bit more about a little bit later. They're also proposing to construct one mobile loofah shed, as well as one permanent greenhouse here. They're also requesting the ability to construct a future greenhouse just to the side of that other greenhouse in the future. They're also proposing, you know, maintaining those two mobile chicken coops, the ability to locate two RVs slash airstream trailers for the seasonal worker housing in the summer. They're also proposing to install a 20,000 gallon buried water tank for fire suppression, an ADA parking area, an entry walkway, two rain gardens, as well as they're also proposing to demolish about eight other structures that they're currently using for those programs. And lastly, the big thing that they're proposing is the learning center. So it's this darker building here in the center. And specifically that structure is going to house a lot of different uses. They include a welcome center, a retail farm stand, a soup and salad bar for users on site. In the application, there was the proposal for a root cellar to allow for storage for the crops, as well as storage for crops from other farmers in the area. It's my understanding that this basement farm or root cellar area might be revised a little bit, so I'll let the applicant discuss that a little bit later as well. If those plans do are eliminated. Also within the structure is an equipment library, two learning slash processing kitchens, a pollinator roof garden, outdoor classroom bathrooms and elevator, and there's also some roof mounted solar panels. There's a lot going on, so if I missed anything, I'm sure the applicant will expand upon that. So this application was referred to quite a number of referral agencies. And we did get quite a number of comments back. Those agencies included the Historic Preservation Officer, the Brush Creek Metro District, the Woody Creek Caucus, AVLT, Open Space and Trails, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, the Attorney, zoning officer, the Planning Engineer, the Aspen Fire Protection District, which we did not get comments back from, and Environmental Health, Rafta, CDOT, and Public Works. In addition to a lot of those referral comments, we received letters from Paula, I'm gonna forget her last name, Creo, and Josh Furman, and Judy, and Alan Altman. And then today, we did also receive a letter from Frances Soroka. So that wasn't included in the packet, but hopefully it was emailed out right, right away this afternoon. And hopefully, the commissioners had some time to review that letter. Okay, so basically, there's two pertinent reviews for this application. And those reviews include the location and extent review, because this project is public and is proposed by the city of Aspen. And also, the second review is a review for areas of state interest. So in regards to that areas of state interest review, we'll specifically focus our attention on the areas around an interchange involving an RTL highway. So the Community Development Director is required to make a finding based on this area of state interest. And it was determined that it is not appropriate for finding have no significant impact. And so therefore, this application requires a permit pursuant to Section 1230 and the review criteria in Section 1240 of the Land Use Code. All right, so we'll start with the location and extent review. And the purpose of this review is to determine whether or not the proposed development is in conformance with the applicable county comprehensive plan or the master plan. So as we, we heard from Ellen and Cindy earlier, the applicable master plan for this area is the 2003 Brush Creek Master Plan. And as Ellen said, there are efforts underway to update that plan, because it is quite old. And ideally, those plans are created and managed and updated by a caucus group. However, in lieu of that caucus group, the county is initiating those efforts. And as she mentioned, I think it's important to note that they have been in contact with the Metro District to participate in that update. And I guess I'll also point out once again that that master plan shouldn't be confused with the city's management plan for Cozy Point. And it also maybe mentioned that the word "master plan" is also getting referenced a lot in a lot of the letters from the neighbors and the Brush Creek Metro District. And I think that they're meaning, you know, it means something else to them. The word "master plan," I believe they're referring to maybe a very detailed site plan and future plan, overreaching plan for Cozy Point. So just wanted to clarify some of that terminology before we get started. Okay, so within that 2003 Brush Creek Master Plan, there's a number of goals and objectives and action items for the Brush Creek planning area. Many of those items aren't applicable to this proposed development, but the items that were applicable were addressed within the staff's memo within the packet. So in effort to kind of conserve time, I'm not going to go through each of those in detail. But basically, I'll just state that most of those items staff believed that the application was in conformance with. And those include the agricultural guidelines, sewage disposal objectives, the water objective, the commercial development objective, and historic resources objective, and the scenic quality objective. So I'm happy to discuss those further, but to save time, I'm just going to jump into the ones that had a little bit more concern for staff. So, oh, and I, I'll also note that the affordable housing objective was also included in there. And as I just mentioned, the applicant is proposing to airstream trailers on site in the summer. And this may be permitted with guidance from Section 43050. The P&amp;Z should be somewhat familiar with that section as they reviewed. It was a code amendment to, to allow for that seasonal workforce housing. So staff does believe that that housing is appropriate and complies with that objective in that master plan. I guess I should also note that there is a road section in the master plan. However, it's very specific to Brush Creek Road, and it really doesn't make mention of Juniper Hill Road or the intersection with Highway 82. So that section wasn't very applicable, excuse me, to this, to this proposal. But roads, concerns regarding roads and transportation are addressed within the areas of state interest section of the application. Okay, so moving on to, basically, there's two other sections of the master plan, which I want to discuss a little bit more, and those are the open space and trail section. And basically, that section had the objective to, in its states, to rezone the publicly owned parcels intended for conservation purposes from AR-10 to public. And the Brush Creek Metro District also commented and included the recommendation that this parcel be rezoned to the PUB Zone District. So while this parcel is AR-10, it is publicly owned. It has not been rezoned to PUB. This route, the rezoning has not occurred due to the fact that in 2006, the county adopted Code Section 380, which specifically states that no new lands may be included in the public industrial unclassified or recreation zone districts. And really, the intent for this code change was to promote locating those uses within the urban growth boundary. So this is kind of a good example of how this objective within the 2003 Brush Creek Master Plan doesn't quite, it doesn't, it doesn't consistent with our land use code today. So, um, I guess despite all that, it's somewhat of a mute point, because this parcel is owned by the city of Aspen. It's a government, governmental entity. And so for that reason, any review for development on this parcel is based on conformance with the applicable county master plan. So in this case, it is the Brush Creek Master Plan. And so therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the applicant and the Brush Creek Metro District and the county all really work together to incorporate a detailed and very holistic plan for Cozy Point Ranch within the updated master, Brush Creek Master Plan, which Ellen was discussing earlier. The last objective that I just want to touch on for this review is the wildlife objective. In short, it basically states that development should preserve the important wildlife habitat. Areas of high biological significance should be protected to the extent possible. So as I just noted, Brush Creek runs just to the south of the proposed farm collaborative area. Oh, shoot, sorry. And while most of this area isn't within any kind of mapped significant wildlife habitat area, staff would like to recognize this area as important riparian area. And throughout the land use code, we do maintain a 50-foot setback for developments, as well as 100-foot setback. So in this case, the applicant is proposing that that access road be extended a little bit more. They state that they need to do this because of recommendations from the fire department. However, staff doesn't believe, and I think Jeffrey was touching on this a little bit earlier, about the 2018 resolution, which basically stated, you know, don't expand that road. We recognize that it's been there for a while, and it's used for just agriculture purposes, but it shouldn't be expanded. And so staff's recommendation to definitely not expand that if possible, although the applicant has stated there's, there's no feasible alternative. Staff would request that in the future, in any future planning efforts, that they look at realigning that road to maybe go to the west here to avoid that, that setback in riparian habitat area. So with that, I guess, in summary, I get, staff generally believes that the proposal is consistent with the 2003 Brush Creek Master Plan. The overall site reorganization, including demolition of the eight structures, the regrouping of the new structures, that that'll all improve the agricultural efficiencies, the livestock health, visitor health and safety, as well as agricultural educational opportunities. So thereby, it really does support the general objectives of the Brush Creek Master Plan. All right, so I'll go ahead and move on to the second portion of the application. And that is the review for the areas of state interest, specifically areas around interchanges involving RTL highways. And these areas are subject to the provisions of Chapter 12 in the Land Use Code. So as I briefly mentioned, this application is being reviewed pursuant to Chapter 12 due to the fact that the primary access to the farm collaborative is taken from Juniper Hill Road, which bisects Highway 82. So good picture of that is shown on the screen here. The review criteria, as you've noticed in the packet, is quite lengthy. So again, I'm going to hopefully make the assumption that the commissioners have read the memo and the application, and I'm just going to focus on the sections that staff had some concern, or the sections that likely have more discussion around them. So I guess I'll just state that in general, staff does believe that the application meets most of the requirements for areas of state interest without the need for mitigation. And I'll also somewhat leave it up to the applicant to showcase all the positive aspects. I don't want to just ignore those that are within this application, because there are, most of the application does comply, like I said, with those standards. And it does not need mitigation. So with that, I guess I'll just jump right into the meat of it, of our discussion, and that is Section 1230150. So in addition to those general requirements in Chapter 12, there was the requirements for additional general middle requirements. And with that, the applicant was requested to provide a comprehensive traffic analysis. The applicant engaged Fox Tuttle Transportation Group to complete the traffic analysis, which was provided in the application. Should probably be noted that due to COVID and the impacts of COVID on the traffic patterns, the traffic analysis that they relied upon was from 2016. They also utilized a set of traffic counts from the Brush Creek Metro District, which were taken on both sides of Cozy Point, the Cozy Point driveways in July of 2019. So that Section 1230150 required a list of additional items, such as a report detailing a maximum traffic volume, air quality mitigation actions, and a survey detailing existing unplanned motorized traffic facilities. And it had quite a long list of other items. So again, the applicant did provide a traffic analysis to address most of those items in that section. It was found that basically, the farm collaborative, their existing and their proposed uses will not result in significant additional traffic and that the traffic related impacts on a peak hour, on a peak or hourly basis. It was also stated in that report that this is due in part to the existing maximum site capacity being 75 people at one time. Other key findings in that report included the estimate that Cozy Point Ranch generates approximately 255 automobile trips a day. The farm collaborative generates approximately 200 one-way trips per day. They also found that with the expanded uses, they would create an additional 40 trips a day. It was also stated, and I think it's important to note, that they, they stated that it was their understanding that any special events beyond those listed would be limited to 50 people. I'm not sure where they got that or if that's true, but we can discuss that a little bit later. So again, staff agrees that most of the proposed increase in the use of the farm collaborative and the associated traffic can be mitigated. Staff's primary concern is that the applicant, application is not totally clear on some of those frequencies and capacities of some of those uses. So therefore, it's really difficult to fully understand the limits of the future impacts. Those would include, like I said, the special events that may occur. Right now, the applicant, the application doesn't state a specific number of events. So while it's, you know, I think we have good faith that they wouldn't have too many events and would be very cautious of their impacts. There is a potential that they could have, you know, events every day, or a couple even every day. So there's that potential. There's also an unlimited number of college and student workshop, workshops that may occur. And then lastly, one of staff's primary concerns was looking at the ranch as a whole and understanding what, what the limit would be on all the events and activities and programs across the entire parcel. So while the maximum occupancy may be limited to 75 people at one time, like I said, there is a potential that that could definitely exceed that average of 40 additional trips a day. So we understand that it's, it's going to be difficult to put a cap or a number on some of those uses and programs. And so instead, it's, staff has recommended that a maximum traffic generation cap be created, just so that everyone involved can understand what that maximum number is. And that recommendation has been included as a condition in the draft resolution. Additionally, the applicant has provided a list of mitigation measures in what they call the transportation demand management measures. And so some of those include carpooling, encouraging the use of raft buses to travel to the parcel, encouraging school groups to use a school bus. They also stated that they'll provide a 15-passenger van to shuttle site users between Cozy Point Ranch and the Park and Ride at the intercept lot. And they've also stated that they intend to reach, reach out and research the potential for Woody Creek, the Woody Creek Shuttle to provide service and circulate through Cozy Point. So I guess to summarize, staff does agree that those, those measures will be very useful to mitigate those impacts. They have been included in the draft resolution, and we've also kind of expanded upon those conditions to really nail down what they mean by when they say encouraged carpooling, what, what does that mean? So that has been included in that draft resolution. And in addition to those conditions, we'd recommend that an annual audit be conducted every year, just so we can understand those actual traffic volumes to and from Cozy Point. It's recommended that that audit also include a report, you know, discussing the effectiveness of some of those mitigation measures and to annually make some adjustments to improve those mitigation measures. In addition, the applicant has also proposed that they're going to encourage bicycling and pedestrian access, which is great. It's just a little bit concerning, because there's no connecting corridors to those bike paths in the greater area. Therefore, it's recommended that the applicant pursue some access options for those pedestrian and bicycle paths, just so that they can minimize exposure on roads. So that's also been included as a condition in that draft resolution. I guess, and I'll just jump to the next section that staff had some concern with, and that was Section 1 and 2 of Section 124010. And that's the basic permanent application approval criteria for matters of state interest. And those state that the applicant has the necessary expertise and financial capability to develop and operate the project consistent with all requirements and conditions, as well as the project will not create an undue financial burden on existing or future residents of the county. So within the application, it's been represented that this, the development will be privately funded, and there will be no impact or undue financial burden on the existing or future residents of the county. However, within the Brush Creek Metro District referral letter, there was some concerns that were raised by the Metro District that the use and degradation of Juniper Hill Road from Highway 82 to the entrance of Cozy Point Ranch could significantly, significantly impact their Metro District. Currently, they are a partner with the city of Aspen, or there is a, they're a partner in the intergovernmental Or there is a, they're a partner in the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Aspen regarding the cost sharing for that maintenance and upkeep of the road. However, they feel that the formula for the cost sharing agreement no longer fairly represents the uses by each party. So staff agrees that since the time that was created, those uses probably have evolved and it should be revisited to make sure that there is no undue financial burden on on future residents within Brush Creek Metro District. So staff has provided a condition of approval that prior to building from its middle for the farm center, the applicant and Brush Creek Metro District update that cost sharing agreement to accurately reflect the current and proposed use of Juniper Hill Road by both parties. Okay, and the last section in which there was staff concern was compliance of number twenty-one. And that's the requirement that the project will not create a nuisance. So in general, again, staff believes that, you know, day-to-day use, that the application will not create a nuisance. However, as I mentioned before, there is a concern over just not having any kind of cap or limit on the number of special events or some of those classes that will occur. So for an example, right now, there's the Earth Day celebration. And they have received permits for those events, but those events typically include guests of over two hundred people. So that is quite a bit more than what the traffic analysis estimated of fifty guests per event. So this is, this is where staff has quite a bit of concern is is knowing exactly what those caps would be for each of those events and how many events there would be. And like I mentioned before, there's also a a great concern for having various events and programs occurring across the whole parcel at one time without a really refined cap on on some of those user numbers. So again, that condition has been included in the the resolution to establish a cap on those traffic counts. So with that, I'm going to just state that it's staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission that they approve the location and extent review and find it in conformance with the two thousand and three Brush Creek Master Plan subject to those conditions, which I mentioned in the attached resolution. And additionally, we recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending that the B O C C grant a permit for the Farm Collaborative Center in regards to the areas of state interest subject to the attached resolution as well. So I know that was pretty quick. I just want to make sure we have enough time to discuss and everyone can present it. So I'm happy to take questions now or we can let the applicant do their presentation.
Any pressing questions for Tammy? Otherwise, we will turn over the the podium to Mr. Mike Kramer. For the public that have called in after Mike Kramer's and Ed Vardy's presentation, we will open to public comment and commissioners will obviously have a time after both Tammy as well as Mike and public comment to further question the two resolutions in front of us this evening. So any pressing questions from the commissioners for Tammy at this point?
A quick, quick question. Jeff, I don't know if you see it when I raise my hand. Tammy, I couldn't tell from your map overview whether or not any of these new structures or new layouts impacted the existing outdoor riding arena.
No, no, they shouldn't. Short answer is they shouldn't. I'm trying to find a drawing here. So and the applicants can speak to this, but it's my understanding that this access point shown on the screen is primarily for the Farm Collaborative and they they really are limiting their areas of activity to that small area where my cursor is. The riding arena is farther to the north and they do have a separate access up there.
No, I'm I'm referring to the outdoor arena, which is the lower left-hand corner.
I mean, yes, you know, again, I'll let the applicant go into further detail about how they see that functioning. But I mean, yes, there could potentially be some conflicts there. But as we also stated, there is a pretty big overhaul plan for improved access to improve, you know, the flow for all those school groups. So that's my understanding is that they're they're working to improve those those different activities and the way they flow through the site, but I'll let the applicant expand on that.
Any other pressing commissioner questions before we turn the table over to Mr. Michael Kramer? So at this point, Mike is going to address, Mr. Kramer is going to address the conformance really with the two thousand and three Brush Creek Master Plan. That is again, the nature of the location and extent as well as the issuance of the permit. I would also like him to touch on former approvals, including the two thousand and eighteen location extent and completion of those activities over the past three years. So, Michael, all yours.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey. Mike Kramer with Ben and Adams. Hey Tammy, we were gonna show a presentation too and, oh, okay, you took it down. All right, thanks. I'm gonna just bring up our presentation and Tammy did a really great job going over in detail a lot of the stuff we did or wanted to. So I think what we'll do is we'll try and be brief in the beginning and and some of the background. And then we'll go through our existing uses and proposed uses and conformance with the master plan and the activities of state and local interest reviews. And then we'll touch on just some of the staff concerns and we'll try and address to Jeffrey what you asked about previous approvals then. So I'm going to share my screen quickly here. Give me one second. Okay, is that coming up for everybody? Thumbs up. Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Mike Kramer with Ben and Adams, as I said, representing the Farm Collaborative. And we are here this evening for the Learning Center Location and Extent Review for Compliance with the two thousand and three Brush Creek Master Plan and the Activities of State and Local Interest Review. Just in background, the Farm Collaborative is a five oh one C three nonprofit and they promote the sustainable agriculture and local food production through education and leading by example through the valley. And here with me tonight is Ed Vardy, the Executive Director of the Farm Collaborative. And I just want to just quickly present our development team too. We have architects Roland and Broden, Steve Harris is with us tonight. And I think John Roland also has called in too. I think he's hopefully on the line. Landscape architect is Giles Thornley from Connect One, myself, the land planner, and then also Bill Fox from Fox Tuttle Transportation Group. Also with us tonight, Austin Weiss and his team from the city of Aspen. They are on the call as representatives of the city as property owner. And we just want to say, leading up to this hearing, the Farm Collaborative received, had to go through a whole bunch of different processes to get here. But namely, we want to highlight that the city of Aspen Open Space and Trails Board has reviewed the project and authorized us to submit for this land use application. And then we also went in front of city council and presented this package, almost identical package to city council in August. And they also unanimously approved us to move forward with our with our application. So just want to let you guys know that upfront. So Tam, you did a really good job on, you know, where Cozy Point is. So I'm going to go quickly. Cozy Point Ranch North is a hundred and sixty-six acre parcel. And it lies at the intersections of Highway eighty-two and Juniper Hill Road to the north. And then obviously Brush Creek Road and Highway eighty-two to the south. Brush Creek Village subdivision is adjacent to the west. And then also Cozy Point South is to the south and is owned by Picken County. Cozy Point was once part of a much larger sixteen hundred acre ranch that was subdivided into separate parcels in nineteen eighty-one. And the main core of the ranch was was maintained and acquired by the city of Aspen in nineteen ninety-four. And as as it was presented earlier, it contains some really cool iconic structures like the historically designated Red Barn that we can all see from the highway and is really great looking. And then also the metal-sided riding arena that we can all see too, that's used for equestrian operations. Cozy Point's home to a whole bunch of different uses, cattle grazing, equestrian, food production, material storage, archery, and then obviously the Farm Collaborative. The entirety of the property is encumbered by the Easement that's held to the benefit of Aspen Valley Land Trust. That's the A B L T who Eden works closely with from time to time. The property is divided into some different acreages. There's twenty-seven acres for ranch and equestrian, eighty acres of just flat-out undeveloped land, open space, and then sixty acres of irrigated land for meadow and hay production. There has been a whole series of series of previous approvals that Picken County has granted. And the most, I think the one Jeffrey that you asked about was the most recent one, the two thousand and eighteen. I can let the city speak to it when it comes time, but that approval from two thousand and eighteen had a lot to do with grading and site improvements for parking and access. And I think what Tammy was showing in the in her slide presentation was an earth-moving and access permit that was submitted to the county. So I certainly don't want to speak for them, but that is in the works right now with the county. The other improvements that were part of that P and Z approval, I'm not sure if Eden, if you want to quick speak to those, just give it a few seconds to just say where you're at with that with that two thousand and eighteen previous approval, if if anywhere.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mike. So first off, just want to say I'm super grateful to be here. This has been a long time coming. We first started this plan nearly a decade ago when we when we first came in front of this board to to demonstrate, to start the greenhouse that's on site. So it's been a long time coming. And and the specific project began actually with with all the layouts as presented here when we signed the lease agreement with the city of Aspen about three years ago now. It was followed by the location and extents in two thousand and eighteen for most of these elements, for most of the elements in our overall plan, besides the ones that are here in front of you tonight. And all of those elements are either finished or currently under construction. The the only one that we're still finalizing is the greenhouses that were presented in that plan. And we intend to have C O on those this spring.
Okay, thanks, Eden. Okay, I'm going to switch to the next slide here. So what is the Farm Collaborative? For those who don't know, Farm Collaborative's mission is to promote and educate the public about the benefits of local food production. Eden operates the Farm Collaborative at the Cozy Point Ranch under an existing lease agreement, fourteen acres from the city of Aspen, who renewed his lease in in two thousand and eighteen. The Farm Collaborative hosts, you know, a whole array of community events and school programs. And in particular, from all the way from Aspen to Glenwood Springs. As was mentioned earlier, there's the farm park that is basically open to the public and the public can learn about local food production. There's a carbon sequestrian demonstrations and that that Eden does out there to aid in the demonstration of slowing down climate change through his local food production efforts. We wanted to say that currently there's a whole lot of makeshift structures out there. And we want to say that there's currently no indoor space within Eden's lease area. So it's not uncommon to see someone who works for the Farm Collaborative, you know, in their car, connected to a Wi-Fi and working to schedule programming and do the things that need to get done for the Farm Collaborative. A lot of us know about the farm harvest meal that Eden does in the fall. This is a community-wide great event. At times, it's it's hosted twelve hundred people to come and have a free community meal with local food from our valley and surrounding. And he can garner two hundred and fifty volunteers. And in the past, he's done this at the Jerome Hotel. He's also done it at the at the Aspen High School too. And then finally, Eden also is, has the publication Edible Aspen and he promotes his local food production through that too. So one of the things that we want to identify is just the existing and continued operations of the Farm Collaborative. So currently, there's a summer operation that will continue from April into October. There's a winter operation from November to March, but this is really negligible. Operations are greatly reduced in the winter time just because there's no indoor space. Farm-related apprenticeships, this is where a teen can get a get connected with a mentor and learn about agriculture. Typically, that's about five people doing that. The summer programming for children really is a major component of the Farm Collaborative. And I just want to quickly run through some things that will hopefully clarify what what this means and what Eden's current operations are. He operates under a state of Colorado childcare exemption license so that he can have school groups out there and kids and learn about agriculture. Camps generally run from nine AM to three PM. And school tours and children's programming typically operates five days per week with up to sixty-five kids on site. And that usually happens for about two to three hours a day. There's an earth keepers programming that happens. And that program typically goes from Monday through Thursday with twenty-five children. And occasionally, he'll have more up to the sixty-five children max, and that operates from nine thirty AM to three thirty. There's also a parent toddler programming from ten thirty AM to noon during the week. And then also, this was mentioned in Tammy's presentation, the Farm Collaborative Library Co-op. Actually, I'm not sure if you brought that one up, Tammy or not, but regardless, this is the idea where there are hand tools and six pieces of farm equipment that get shared with different members in the community who use them. Currently, they have eight members who are signed up. And then also, they, you know, they typically use them two to three days a week. One of the things that happens out at the Farm Collaborative are farm-to-table meals, and those are associated with educational events. We want to be really clear that farm-to-table meals and the operations at the Farm Collaborative do not constitute a restaurant. It's not what we are and what Eden's about. This is associated with an educational event where somebody might be processing vegetables or produce and they want to learn how to can it, and then there's a meal to follow. There's obviously going to be continued vegetable production and animal and livestock grazing as part of this proposal. Continue, Farm Collaborative will continue to promote the mission of agricultural learning and an emphasis on the health benefits of local food production. There's also farm-related incubator space, and this is typically used for development of better farming practices throughout the valley. And then lastly, there is a maximum capacity of seventy-five people that Eden operates under. And there's also some specific provisions about special events that Eden has in his lease that limit him to a maximum of fifty people with also the ability to go greater than that. So special events is a is an exception to this. And and you might want to speak to a
Thank you, absolutely. And Tammy, thanks for your patience with us if if this wasn't expressly in our application. But our lease agreement with the city of Aspen does have occupancy limits on what we can do. Our licensure with the state as well for our children's programs. So outside of our children and community programs, our capacity maximums are up to two events per week with under fifty people and up to one event per month with over fifty people that has to go through a special event permit with Picken County that would be reviewed by by Picken County before it could be approved. So any any sort of traffic generation or anything that results from both those from from the events that are below or those events that are above have been included in our traffic generation reports. And and we believe that that all of those could be addressed by simply, you know, reinforcing that we are abiding by our lease terms as laid out under our agreement with the city of Aspen. And in those restrictions, and and our traffic generation reports were based off of what we can legally do from our lease agreement with the city. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Eden. Okay, next slide is proposed learning center and new uses. So the idea is that the So the idea is that the there's a lot of makeshift structures out there. There's there's not a lot of cohesiveness. And the main theme is that all these uses are going to go under one roof. And I think that's really key to cluster development into one site and get rid of kind of the the dilapidated look out there at at the Farm Collaborative lease area. There is going to be integrated learning through classes and a demonstration kitchen. So kind of expanding on the topic from the earlier slide, you know, Ed does want to do classes for education of growing vegetables and classes for how to can. And to do that, he proposes to include demonstration kitchens within the new learning center. As we stated before, there'll be a seventy five person max occupancy, sometimes with special events going greater under the lease terms. Ed and is proposing two mobile loafing sheds that are going to be placed on the property. We have a site plan that we're going to show in a few slides here that can kind of get into the into the details of that. One additional greenhouse with the optionality for a potential another greenhouse. A retail farm stand at the Welcome Center. And this is so that there can be sale of farm collaborative related agricultural products, including meat, vegetables, milk potentially to the to the general public, and that would be at the Welcome Center. Farm table meals are part of those demonstration and those classes and demonstration kitchen. And we just want to put some parameters around that so everyone's clear. These education classes and farm to table meals would be up to one evening per week. And arrival of these of folks who come and do these classes are between four and six PM. And then they'd have departure later in the evening. There's a max occupancy of these farm to table meals and classes of fifty people. So we just want to make sure that that's on the record and and that's clear. There is the idea of putting a soup and salad bar out there, and that's basically the idea of having light fare for people who are on site. And we really don't anticipate any additional trips out of that being generated. These are the soup and salad bars for people who are already there. The root cellar is located in the basement, which we'll get into design when Roland and Broughton does a quick overview of of their presentation. But this is really the idea that we're going to allow for expanded food production across Warren Fork Valley by offering cellar space for other farmers and other people to come and store their vegetables. And that probably looks like maybe farmers in the area who grow more than they can eat or they can sell, they can come to Ed's Learning Center and store it there for future use. Adult college workshops. Ed would like to have a use that incorporates college students into local food production and education. And it doesn't have to be secluded, college students, you know, adults can obviously attend to. And then lastly, for this slide, we want to just say that Ed would like to put two RVs for farm collaborative employees. And we're not exactly sure if those would be airstream trailers. I know that we mentioned that in the application, but they could be pull behind trailers. And they are specifically for farm collaborative workers for the growing season. So they could stay there overnight. And we actually think that that's a really good cause for a net reduction in site traffic to Cozy Point. Some deep details and dimensions, we've got some a lot of really pretty renderings here, and we're going to have Roland and Broughton kind of go through those and provide some information on them, but I just want to go through some heights and floor areas of of the new building. So we're proposing a twenty six foot nine inch maximum height limit. Obviously, the the county height limit can go up to thirty three feet to the ridge and but we're calking out at twenty six feet nine inches. And we just want to say too that, you know, with adjustments and things that might tick up a little bit or might come down a little bit, but this this is where we're thinking that the the building will land. There'll be a four thousand square feet main level for the new building. A four thousand square foot subgrade level with the root cellar that we talked about. And then eight hundred square foot office space. So total clocks in at eight thousand eight hundred square feet of of proposed floor area. You may have noticed P and Z commissioners in the resolution that there was mention of a four thousand square foot total structure size. Our application is for we're representing eighty eight hundred square feet, but as Ed and is starting to go through the design development phase and trying to understand financials of this, there is the possibility that he might have to reduce the basement size. So we just want to say that out front that there is, we'd like for an option just to to say that we would reduce the basement why by keeping the above grade design and intent intact with the building. So if we could include some optional minor design changes, we'd really appreciate that in the in the P and Z decision. Okay, this slide is a blow up of the Farm Collaborative lease area. And we think this is a really good site plan and map to kind of show what's going on. But basically, there are a number of all these different structures that are currently out there. They total eight. And eight of those structures total three thousand square feet, and we propose to remove those. And then bring all the operations under one roof. And we just wanted to highlight this to show that we're consolidating structures on the property. So I'm going to stop talking for a minute, and I'm going to let Giles Thornley from Connect One provide some detail on the overall site plan and walk us through the site layout, access and new construction, the learning center. And I think him and Ed and are going to tag team these next two slides, so I'm going to turn it over to these guys for a few minutes.
Thanks very much, Mike. Tammy, 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 you you've done my job for me. I wasn't expecting you to speak for half the length you were. So you did a brilliant job of of giving us an overview overlay. Thank you very much. I'll just say it with a different accent.
Giles, maybe you can directly attack and and help us understand the site layout and needs to encroach the riparian area to the south. And the changes from the changes you're requesting from the twenty eight twenty eighteen approvals that look like you're again, it's sort of in deference to our conversation previously with Mr. Richmond. It looks like those that conversation has been forgotten. So we would love for you to channel this conversation towards the operational access, the lack of support from in terms of documentation to increase that operational road. So and if it's not Giles, then we can go back to Mike, but I'd love to focus your comments directly to again, what we said in twenty eighteen and what you're sort of approaching and and asking for in twenty twenty one.
I can speak to that if if that would make sense.
Go go ahead.
Mike, can we get the next slide?
Oh, sure. Yep.
So yes, Jeffrey, thank you for pointing that out. So this is a this is a map that Tammy shared and so eloquently walked us through. If you look at number nine, this is the farm lane that we're referring to. This farm lane was was presented in the two thousand eighteen application at that time or immediately following when the fire department came out. There were a few points on this lane where the fire department requested that we widen it in order to accommodate fire vehicles. That is the main, that's the main difference between what we're presenting now and what we were requesting then. This is still to be used for farm access. This is not a general public road. The other the other piece of of why we're proposing to improve this road just a little bit beyond what it currently is, is we understand the county's desire to close access off of Highway eighty two. And should that access close, there would be no way for the residents as well as for our operation over on this. If you can see where Brush Creek is and on the east side of Brush Creek. This is where most of our operating lease footprint is, and there would be no way for us to get over there for our staff or for our vehicles. And in in this, this is still absolutely intended to be a farm lane. But we would we would request to, you know, to put down a little bit of gravel or crusher fines or whatever the fire department requests what to accommodate their need. And because we understand the county's desire to limit or eventually eliminate access off of Highway eighty two. And there is currently no other way to access that part part of the farm. Does that answer your question, Mr. Woodruff?
Yeah, it does. I guess the question is, in the resolution, we'll define. Again, it's difficult to approve this without a letter from the authority having jurisdiction. So there's no letter from the fire department, for example, in the package, and I'm not being, I'm not trying to be pedantic, but it's like, we just met in twenty eighteen with Alan Richmond and said, hey, it's a two track. And it's it sounds like we're being asked to approve something that's not well defined, nor do we actually have a letter from the fire department requesting what that access should be. And so all we're looking to do tonight is say, did you conform to a master plan? It says, look, this is a wildlife corridor. And, you know, both the Aspen Area Community Plan, the ABLT Conservation Easement, as well as the Brush Creek Master Plan, all say one thing and the site plan is saying another. So that's that's my concern.
Thank you. Yeah, and and I I'm I'm happy to bring a letter from the fire department if that would be helpful. And and then in terms of ABLT and the Colorado Division of Wildlife, Parks and Wildlife, both entities reviewed this application and didn't see it in conflict with with their initiatives.
Mike, anything else in your presentation?
No, I think Ed and hit it. We can try and work with Aspen Fire and and provide some comments for you guys.
Excellent. Again, we spent thirty minutes with with Alan and probably, you know, and with Ed and in twenty eighteen. We talked about two track a lot, you know, the mask, it it just doesn't seem like it's in accordance with the master plan, given the corridor that this currently sits on, given the riparian area. So it is a major concern and I'm, you know, I'm not, I I think everyone in this call cares. So it's not a matter of, you know, I just want to make sure that the recitals that we record as we did in twenty eighteen, you know, meet everyone's concern about how we treat that that specific area of the property.
Yeah, that makes sense. You know, I will add, just so everyone's aware that, you know, we we did put the setbacks from the high watermark from Brush Creek on this plan. And I think my laser pointer is working. Is that working for everybody? So here's fifty feet right here. That's a fifty foot setback, and some of the existing structures are are within that fifty foot setback, for example, that panic boat. And then this is the hundred foot setback from Brush Creek, and that's, you know, a current, you know, land use code standard. I know we're not talking about that, but I just want to just make mention to the P and Z and everybody that we did cite the Learning Center a hundred feet away from the high watermark of the of the Brush Creek, of Brush Creek, because we wanted to avoid riparian area. Okay, I can go on to the next slide if you're ready, Jeffrey.
Please, sorry, Michael, it's yours.
Okay. All right, so these are the architectural renderings. These are the next three slides, and I'm going to turn it over to Steve Harris from Roland and Broughton. He's going to go just quick through design intent and just give some clarity on the approach and the ideas behind the new learning center. So go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. You know, we are really excited for this project and what it means for the valley. A great introduction to this building here is is this southern view where you're accessing down the walkway towards the main entrance of the building. You know, the you're you're seeing some very simple forms here. A humble structure with a gable form, you know, we tried to detail this from an agricultural aesthetic to fit in with its surrounding context. We you're seeing the lower structure there is kind of the the farm entrance, the Welcome Center. You can kind of see the the farm logo against the wall. And and, you know, we're we're trying to use simple materials like that respect to wood plaid siding, regenerative wood materials on that gable form in an effort to, you know, create a holistic design that's intended to stand the test of time by creating a greener ecological footprint. Mike, if you'll go to the next slide.
Okay.
This this project is also pursuing very ambitious goals with respects to neutral trend, you know, neutral embodied and operational carbon, net zero energy goals, you know, and and a deconstruction plan at the end of useful life. And and what we're trying to, you know, really focus on here in this view, looking to the north, is, you know, citing the building with optimum southern southern exposure, glazing that's going to be included in passive and active solar design. You can see the PV solar ray on the roof. You know, utilizing glazing and shading devices along that southern edge, you can see that in the dark with the people and the material over outdoor classroom spaces while also trying to maximize internal daylighting through these windows into the site to minimize electrical loading and lighting and really try to create regenerative structure. The the primary structure for the for the building is a, you know, mass timber with regenerative engineered wood products. And we're really trying to focus on, you know, making sure we we tackle these from a sustainable perspective through earthen floors to to regulate thermal mass for temperature control fluctuations. And then wrapping the whole thing in a high performance building envelope to minimize heating and cooling requirements. You can see the glazing here. You can see the PV solar rays, the glass, as well as the solar shading elements. Next slide, Mike.
Okay.
And finally, as we're kind of looking to the west here, you can see some of the other elements projecting from the building here. You know, of course, we have, you know, the indoor and outdoor learning spaces, like I mentioned, underneath the the shading elements there. You know, we also have an equipment library for loading of food production, production, pro production equipment. You can see that with the tractors there kind of on the right side of the building. We also have, which I think is a really key element, you know, the elevated observation deck and you can, it's integrated within that solar trellis structure that also is a linking element to an elevated pollinator garden and rooftop garden. You know, th- these are all really kind of important aspects to the the goal and the mission for this for this structure. And and in closing, we, you know, we'd like to say the own the design of the structure is really a vehicle for connecting the children, the community to nature through farming and food while maintaining a respectful rural vernacular that's in context with the existing structures and importantly with the historic designated structures on the property.
Okay. Mike, can you follow up?
Oh, sorry, Jeffrey.
No, yours. It's all yours.
Okay, thanks, Steve. I'm going to keep on rolling through our our presentation here. We wanted to, next slide, talk about the location and extent review and compliance with the master plan. I I don't want to double up on what was said before. But there are a few things that we want to, we just want to bring up and put on the record. One is that, you know, we looked at the Brush Creek Master Plan as it relates to our project, and we focused in on page eighteen. And one of the statements in the master plan says that, quote, productive agricultural land is a limited resource and that it should be conserved. And we completely agree. We think this project fits squarely within this statement. Ed's Farm Collaborative operation and the Learning Center is a provides for productive agricultural land and food production. And we obviously it's being conserved by his his proposal. Another sentence and statement on page eighteen of the plan, provide incentives to cluster development and or place conservation easements over agricultural preservation areas within Brush Creek Planning Area. We feel that we really are clustering development. We're eliminating approximately eight kind of makeshift structures and reducing three thousand square feet of floor area and putting it all under one roof. And we really think we're we're clustering and in compliance with the plan. There's an existing conservation easement already over the property to the benefit of ABLT. So we can't place any more conservation easements on it, but we really feel that we fit squarely within the statement. And then finally, there's a roads and transit statement as an objective in the two thousand three Brush Creek Master Plan. And this section relates almost entirely to Brush Creek Road and its access to the town of Snowmass Village. And this section of the plan really is overtly descriptive in its traffic, traffic objectives and action items concerning future town of Snowmass Village development and Brush Creek Road impact. The Brush Creek Master Plan does not contain any objectives or action items for Juniper Hill Road or its relationship to Highway eighty two. The plan, however, acknowledges that Juniper Hill Road is maintained for service and snow removal by Brush Creek Metro District And Cozy Point Ranch is, is accessed off Juniper, Juniper Hill Road. And a proposed learning center will only use Juniper Hill Road. Brush Creek Road is, is just not proposed to be used. Okay, for the activities of local and state interest review. It, you know, this review really casts a wide net of review criteria, um, that the farm collaborative is subject to. It's, as was mentioned earlier before, um, that, uh, we are subject to the, um, criteria for interchanges and arterial highways, section of the land use code. And, you know, we're going to, we just want to acknowledge traffic is really a key consideration, um, in this. And the farm collaborative has hired a traffic engineer, Bill Fox. He's on the line with us. He's from the Fox Tuttle Transportation Group. And, um, we engaged him to study existing traffic and future traffic generation, uh, for the project. One of the things I want to, Bill's going to talk here, but one of the things I want to just kind of queue up his presentation on is that one of the key items for consideration of this activities of, uh, state and local interest review is its relationship to a CDOC, C dot access permit. That's Colorado Department of Transportation. And through C dot, uh, regulations, once you hit a 20% threshold of increased traffic generation. You have to apply for a C dot access permit. And there's a whole bunch of, um, criteria and, um, you know, submitted requirements. And we're aware of that. We're aware of that, um, those requirements. And through, um, Bill's study of the existing operations and, uh, proposed uses. We're finding that there is an insignificant traffic generation that does not come close to the 20% threshold. So I'm going to let, um, Bill, um, jump in. And I'm going to actually not share my screen anymore. So you guys can see, we don't have any slides for traffic. So you guys can, um, see and listen to Bill talk as, as he's going through this.
Mike, can we do traffic in 60 seconds or less?
I hope so.
Bill, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's going to be tough, but I'll try. So Tammy already hit most of the, the high points of our findings. We did a detailed traffic assessment of this site. We, we built on work that I had done with Austin Weiss on the Cozy Point. Uh, a few years ago, we got around the limits of COVID-19 and were able to use traffic counts from before the COVID pandemic. And at the end of the day, we were able to quantify the amount of traffic that comes into the Cozy Point Ranch and estimated the amount of, of that traffic that's attributable to the farm collaborative. Worked with Eden and Mike and, and at length to figure out what the existing uses are, what the new uses will be and estimate how much additional traffic that will bring to the Juniper Hill Road and ultimately to State Highway 82. And so at the end of the day, in this 60-second, um, summary, the, the, the site will not trigger that 20% threshold for needing a C dot access permit. But more importantly, the site will not bring enough traffic to the intersection of State Highway 82 and Juniper Hill Road to warrant a traffic signal. There are national standards for warranting traffic signals. I participate on the the National Committee that writes that book, uh, the MUTCD. And this development will not get us to warranting a, uh, traffic signal at that intersection. Tammy mentioned all the great TDM measures that will help minimize the amount of traffic. And I'm probably out of 60 seconds. So that's my, my quick summary. I am certainly willing to answer any questions and go into any more detail as, as needed.
Thank you for your availability. It is, um, um, Bill, thank you. It is 6:37. I just want to check in with both the applicant staff as well as commissioners. I think we are going to go past 7:00 PM this evening. My personal preference would not be to do a continuance, but to power on this evening and go through. Uh, this is a public hearing and we have, we, we will take public comment. Um, so the question for Mike, Bill, Steve, Ed and John Rowland, uh, Steve Harris, from the application standpoint, I'm assuming you want to continue to power on this evening.
We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, and from staff, I know Cindy, Suzanne, Bonnie. Maybe Zach. Tammy, can we power on this evening?
I'm good.
Thank you. Uh, and I'd ask the public, but, um, I'm about to open up the public. Uh, so from a commissioner's standpoint, any questions for Steve, John, Giles, Mike, uh, Bill, or, or even the city of Aspen for Austin, who's hung in for an hour and 38 minutes?
Excuse me. Uh, this Cliff, you did not ask the commissioners whether we had an objection to going past seven.
Uh, so Cliff, Jasmine, Jim, Monty, uh, do you have any objections to going past 7:00 PM this evening? And maintaining a quorum past 7:00 PM?
Jim is good.
Sorry.
Yeah, Monty's good.
And I have a concern as to how far past seven.
Um, we're about to open up to public comment and I know Bill Fox is going to be upset with me because I will open up to public comment and limit public comment to three minutes per individual. When I only gave him one minute. Um, but I'm, um, I'm conscious of your time and, um, the number of people on this call. So uh, we will be as expeditious as possible, but I can't. Uh, we have 32 participants on the line and we will take public comment until it's been exhausted. So three minutes times X.
Hey Jeffrey, this is Mike. Um, we, we, we had a few more slides, but we're going to conclude our presentation and say thank you very much to the P and Z. Uh, we can address every, anything you'd like, um, in our presentation or any details. Bill's going to stay on the line. He's an important part of this, this, um, our application. But I do want to say that, um, there are some city of Aspen, um, open space and trails staff on the line too. And I'm not sure if they wanted to quick say anything before we conclude our, our presentation.
I, I would welcome their input. And I, again, I think the piece that we all do really care about is the south. The south portion of, of the, um, of the parcel where your continuing development, that's sort of different than you were in 2018. Uh, it is a wildlife corridor. Again, our remit this evening is the Brush Creek master plan, the AVLT conservation easement that's on it. Um, you know, how this fits into the Aspen community plan also is touching the Brush Creek master plan. So that's all contained. But no, we would love to hear from Austin if there's someone else, uh, on the open space and trails, uh, side that would ease sort of planning commission concerns regarding the wildlife corridor and development on that property. That would be, that, you know, that would be a good use of everyone's time.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Jeffrey. I appreciate that. Uh, my name's Austin Weiss and I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Aspen. I'm joined by Matt Kuhn, who is our Parks and Open Space Director and Michael Tunte, who is our Parks Planner and John Spees, who is our, um, Open Space Manager and Natural Resource Manager. And, uh, and I, I appreciate the, the concern that's been expressed um, about that south side. And certainly the Brush Creek corridor is an important corridor for us. To the fact, to the point where we are, um, beginning to look at, um, opportunities to do, um, extensive restoration efforts, if you will, through the, through the Brush Creek, um, corridor there. Um, I, I recognize your concerns about the, the farm, um, access road there and, uh, certainly, um, we can look at ways to, to try to, to work with that. Having said that, um, I just wanted to briefly mention that, uh, yeah, as, as Mike did earlier, that Ed's plans here for the, the farm learning center, um, have, uh, gone through extensive review with the, the Open Space and Trails Board and City Council. But more importantly, or not necessarily more importantly, but also that, uh, the, the two-year effort for the, the management plan for Cozy Point Ranch was a very exhaustive community, um, development plan and, um, in a lot of participation from, uh, lots of different user groups, lots of neighbors and, and uh, we're, we're really pleased with the direction that that had sent us in, if you will. And, and that is, uh, not only with the equestrian operation, but the, uh, the sustainable ag components of that. And, and so the, the vision that Eden has laid out for that, uh, for the farm collaborative really aligns very, very nicely with the management plan, um, for the property. And with that, I'm going to just turn it over to, to Matt Kuhn, our Director of Parks and Open Space.
Thanks, Austin. Uh, good evening commissioners. Uh, my name's Matt Kuhn. I'm the interim Parks and Open Space Director. Just wanted to add one other or two other quick points before, uh, you open it up to public comment. The city of Aspen and the Parks and Open Space Depend Department, uh, we really support this application. And, uh, the application for the farm collaborative learning center. Uh, we believe and we heard from the community, as Austin mentioned, that agriculture and sustainable agriculture has a place at Cozy Point. And we really like how this, uh, learning center consolidates impacts and creates, uh, a nice space for learning. And, and we really want Ed in and the farm collaborative to succeed at Cozy Point Ranch. Um, in the draft resolution, there's comment about, uh, the access road on Juniper Hill access road. And we welcome the opportunity to open discussions with the Brush Creek Metro District, uh, to review the existing easement agreement, uh, for Juniper Hill Road and determine whether or not the easement terms are, uh, needing revision for future maintenance and use within that easement area. With that, I'll, I'll, I'll pass it off to you guys. I recognize you have plenty more to, to do. But, uh, just wanted to share those two thoughts with y'all.
Thank you. And Mike, anyone else on your team? Cliff, any other further objection with regards to, um, continuing past seven this evening?
Nobody else on our team, Jeffrey. Um, thanks. We appreciate it. And then when the time comes, we just want to be able to talk through some of the conditions of approval, um, in the results for the P and Z.
Understood. And, and I'll throw out there just to close my road conversation, which is, I will probably look to add a condition of approval that limits you to soft scape or gravel and crush refine as per Ed's, um, comment. So you can think about that. No rap, no concrete, no, uh, no hardscape. So, you know, how do we come up with that middle ground that says we know we're operating in this wetland corridor? Um, what's the, the, the lightest footprint we can do? I do appreciate Steve Harris's presentation. Um, and the, that, you know, what he described goes beyond, uh, 2018 IACC. And he describes a building that goes beyond honestly current, um, currently adopted. Solar and battery requirements and everything else we just adopted in 2020. So thank you for that. I also want to put out there that you've designed a building that's actually lower than your friends across the street over at the Brush Creek Intercept lot. So, um, you are roughly seven feet underneath their building. So thank you for that. Um, at this point, this is a public meeting. Um, we are opening up for public comments. I would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, given, uh, the time in the evening. I will come back, uh, to the commissioners if there are any questions either for the applicant again, or for staff before we uh, vote on either resolution this evening. So again, we're open for public comment. Um, I realize there's roughly 30 people uh, on this Zoom at 6:46 PM. Public comment.
I'd like to comment if I could.
Um, so you have a floor if you just state your name. That'd be great.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Tom Newland, uh, private land use consultant representing the Brush Creek Metro District. I think Rick Stevens is also in here, but he's not feeling so good today. So he kind of told me to take the reins. Um, we really appreciate, uh, staff, uh, listening to us in the letter. I think a lot of the, uh, conditions that are recommended or proposed by Tammy, um, cover a lot of our concerns and we appreciate that, particularly the ones regarding, uh, carpooling and a little bit better definition on, on how we can reduce traffic on Juniper Hill Road through Rafta. Uh, I think that's a really good idea. The circulation route of, uh, Woody Creek, uh, route through the ranch, I think is a really good idea. And I hope that you will consider those, uh, recommendations, uh, within your resolution as conditions of approval. Um, we're also pleased to hear from the city that they're, they'd like to open up discussions on the IGA for the lower part of Juniper Hill Road. I think that's good progress and I, I like the way, uh, it's conditioned before the building permit. So we can definitely get it on the table and taken care of. I don't think it'll take too much. And with that, I'll, um, I'll, I'll stop and I don't know if Rick's up to it, but if, if so, um, hopefully he'll talk to you as well. Thanks.
Tom, thank you for your time. Next, public comment.
So if you don't mind Jeff, I'm just going to run through everybody that I have on the attendees list and call them out and ask them if they would like to speak. And then we'll give them their three minutes.
Thank you.
So I have a Mr. D.
No comment, just observing.
Bonnie, after Mr. Corbin.
I responded. I don't know if you were able to.
Thank you, David.
Okay, sorry.
You're fine. Um, Bonnie, after David.
I don't know if, I don't know if Bonnie's, uh, internet blipped. Um, it looks like there's also, um, Jerry Scheinbaum on the line.
Yes.
Yeah, I have no comment.
Um, Joyce.
Joyce, would you like to say something? I've asked Joyce to unmute. Joyce, can you hear us? Push star six if you're on your phone. It may come back to Joyce. I have a Lawson Willis on the line. Lawson, would you like to make a comment?
I would. Um, uh, I'm a resident of Brush Creek Village. Our concern, of course, is traffic. Obviously Eden has done a very nice job and, and his team in, in putting a building together. And, and, uh, certainly it's an impressive building. But, uh, he's talking about 9,000 square feet. He's talking about the people to keep that 9,000 square feet. He's talking about having children down there. He's talking about education. He's talking about dinners. He's talking about farm to table dinners. He's talking about camps and school things to, to, for, to reach a conclusion of no significant impact is mind boggling to me. Um, I, I'm not a traffic engineer. Um, I would defer to Bill Fox. I guess I would, would ask him to address that. But that is a very tenuous road off of Highway 82. And that intersection is the worst intersection i- in, in the valley. And they're not spending $1, not $1 on that roadway. Now, I don't know how you reach it, no significant impact. So I would ask the, the, uh, members of the planning and zoning to, to think about that. Does, does it even pass a straight face test that we can have that kind of activity down there? We're not going to have mommies picking up children. And we're not going to have people coming in to buy something from the tables, uh, or from the, uh, uh, stand, the fruit stand or whatever, vegetable stand. We're going to have a lot of that and this thing is going to build. I think it's really important, um, that we do have that annual survey of traffic. And I'd ask the, uh, P and Z to establish defined limits as to what the, that, that traffic should be and what's allowable. And remedies, w- once they go over that. This thing could easily grow well over what they're telling us, easily. And, you know, we're going to be stuck with roadway that is insufficient. So that's our concern. Um, obviously everything else, uh, seems, uh, okay with us. You know, this is a lot more attention and activity than we've ever had out here in, in the upper mid-valley. And, um, uh, we'd ask the, uh, board to seriously consider the traffic impacts that are going on. But to say it's insignificant, I don't think is realistic. That's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Joyce, are you able to speak now? I'm still having difficulties with Joyce. We do have a Brush Creek Metro on also. Any comments from Brush Creek Metro?
Um, this is Rick Stevens. Thank you for asking. I do have one concern. But I'm also happy to see that we're going to have a stronger partnership with ranch and the city. Uh, the location of the The location of the farm lane, it looks like it comes right out into that Upper Ranch Road, Juniper Hill sort of Y. That's a really busy place right there. So you know, I would ask you to take a look at that and maybe evaluate how that might work. That's really it for now.
Rick, thank you. Any further public comment at this time? Bonnie, any further public comment?
That is all I have.
At this point, at 6:54, I'm closing to public comment. I'm returning back to the commissioners for questions from either the applicant or from staff at this point.
Question for the applicant.
Cliff, you have the floor.
I may have missed it, but where exactly is the farm stand located? Is it in that building or is it separate? In the large building?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. It is in the building. It's an extension of the Welcome Center. So basically a mall farm stand that will be located where people are welcomed into the building and organized in an organized way oriented to the site.
Are you limited as to signage on 82 about this farm stand?
We are, it is my understanding that we cannot pursue signage without approvals from Picken County.
Thank you.
Jasmine, any questions for the applicant or for staff?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I do not have any questions.
Monty, any questions for the applicant or staff?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. It's Monty. What is your timeline for completion of the project, do you guys feel?
Ed, do you want to, do you want to take that one? I can say that in the onset, you know, you're the first review P and Z on this, and then we go to the Board of County Commissioners. So with B O C C approval, we'd like to start submitting for building permit, but I'm not sure of the construction schedule. Ed wants to relay on that.
Basically, from our standpoint, immediately after approval. So we're targeting to basically minimize our construction window as much as possible. So it doesn't intervene with program season. And so that we can really minimize the impact to the neighborhood with construction. Our target would be to occupy the building in 2022.
And would that be the entire project? I mean, as far as all the landscaping roads and, you know, just finishing it up by then? Or another year, you think?
It fully depends on the length it takes us to get building permit. In our ideal scenario, we would be complete in 2022. If it takes longer than we hope to get building permit, we may need another season for landscaping, depending on when construction is complete in relation to the seasons at hand.
Great. Monty, further questions?
No, I'm good.
Who else do we have on line?
Jim.
Jim, further questions for staff and/or the applicant?
I have a couple of questions, Jeff. Let's start with traffic. I want to echo what Lawson said about traffic. And in the mornings during rush hour, pre-COVID times, what happens on that road is school buses pull off. Neighborhood residents come down there with their children and wait for the school bus. There's kind of a traffic jam there and getting out from Juniper Hill Road onto the highway is difficult if you're heading up valley and nearly impossible if you have to cross the highway and head down valley. And I wanted to ask the traffic experts whether or not they were aware of those conditions and whether they've considered those conditions.
So this is Bill Fox, if I should answer, is that appropriate?
You're one of the traffic experts.
Bill, the floor is yours.
Okay, so certainly we are aware of the existing traffic volumes and the existing issues that you described and agree that it's a tough intersection at times. The good news about this site is the traffic direction that you just described, meaning outbound in the Morning Peak. This site isn't going to generate much traffic. And in my one minute summary, I didn't have the opportunity to say that most of the traffic accessing the Farm Collaborative will be outside of those peak periods. So they will not be additive to the congestion that you just described. And they're going in a direction, even if they were inbound in the Morning Peak, that's, you know, that's not as tough as what you've described, getting going the other way.
Except that if they're dropping kids off in the morning, then they'll add to the outbound traffic. And I, and I view that the morning, like between 7:30 and 9:30 in the morning is the only time that intersection is a major problem.
Right. And, and you're right that the morning, the drop off in the morning is, has the potential to have the most impact. And talking with Ed, it's my understanding that most of the drop off does not occur in that morning. Let's drive to Aspen to work hour or time period.
Okay, second traffic question. Has anybody considered what the construction access is going to be like? And I'm assuming that something like this is, is going to be a 12-month construction period.
So we have the traffic expert, I'm willing to take it, but the construction management plan will go in with the building permit today. It's conformance with the master plan and conformance with the master plan.
And in fairness.
You want to take it?
In fairness, I have not projected construction traffic. We typically don't. Understanding that every project has construction traffic impacts, but they're short-lived. And so I don't have a specific knowledge or projection on that.
Okay, one, one last question, Jeff. This, this would probably be best addressed to Mike and Giles. We got the P and Z board members got a public comment letter like mid-afternoon today. And I don't know if you had a chance to see it. It's a rather dense letter. But if I could paraphrase it, the letter basically says it's from a resident of the neighborhood who says that he feels that the scope and scale are too large for this neighborhood, that that this impacts the primary focus of Cozy Point, which is Equestrian. And that it takes away from that focus and that adding septic systems and leach fields is incompatible with the operations of the Equestrian Center. So if you haven't seen that letter, that's kind of what the argument this guy was making. And I was wondering if you could just respond to those concerns.
Jim, is that the letter from Fran? What we're talking about?
It's a letter from, yeah, from Francis Soroka.
Okay. You know, I can, I can start off and say that, you know, the Farm Collaborative lease area is 14 acres. And Ed has his existing operations out there. And I think one of the things that came up at the city council hearing was that it looked like a third world country out there. And I'm so not trying to make light of it, but the structures are very dilapidated and they're unsightly. And he's been working out of those structures for the last number of years. And we really feel that formalizing the operations and getting rid of all those different structures and clustering them into one cohesive structure that is, you know, consistent with design with the other structures on Cozy Point is really important. So we really feel we're consistent.
Call in for public input.
I think somebody might be on the line talking. So you know, that's our position as far as design and operations. And do you want to add anything on that before I, before we stop?
I can, I can just a little bit and suggest that what Mike said is absolutely correct. And then in addition to that, and maybe Austin or someone from Parks Department can speak to this. But the city of Aspen conducted a very extensive management plan for the property. There was, they had a very, very significant multi-year public process and outlined what are the key uses and parameters of the site. And Equestrian was absolutely one of them, as was sustainable agriculture, as was education. And so this is, this is in terms of saying that the primary use. I would say that, you know, that there are many uses on the site and this is conforming with those uses as well enhancing, as well as enhancing the opportunity for it to operate more effectively, more smoothly. And I believe it will actually decrease adverse impacts to our neighbor Lee C. Because we'll be able to streamline our operations, make a much more effective access point to enter the facility so that we're not effectively walking in front of the Equestrian operation in the same way that we have in the past. And, and also be able to utilize a farm lane so that we're not, you know, as well interfering with the Equestrian operation. So I believe that this enhances the capacity for us to collaborate more effectively. But maybe Foston wants to chime in on primary use or kind of the uses that are outlined in the management plan.
Yeah, thank you, Ed. And I would, I would concur that both the Equestrian use along with the sustainable ag vision that Ed has been implementing out there are both very widely supported. We certainly saw very strong support from our Open Space Board and the, and City Council. But also just through the public surveys, the outreach that we did for the development of the management plan indicated very strong community support for sustainable ag at Cozy Point.
And in response, Mike, to the concern about size and scale, you made a very good point that there are some buildings that are going to be taken down. So do you know what the net increase in square footage is?
I can speak to that maybe unless Mike you have it on him.
Oh, I was just going to say that, you know, our gross square footage is 8,800 square feet. So 4,000 square feet above grade in the main level, 4,000 square feet below grade in the subgrade level. And then a 800 square foot office that sits on basically a second floor, so 8,800. And then we've calced that approximately 3,000 square feet of the structures that exist today go away.
And then from a, from the standpoint of building footprint, it's, you know, the building itself is, in relation to if you're looking from an aerial view, it's, you know, 4,000 square foot building in terms of the footprint compared to 3,000, it's going away. So it's, it's from my perspective, a pretty substantial improvement in terms of viewpoints and benefits.
So it would be fair to say that in terms of just gross footprint, you're not changing the gross footprint that much. You're just consolidating a lot of small buildings into a larger building.
That's right.
Further commissioner comments or to the chagrin of the gentleman with Robert's rules, we did have one more public comment that did not come through in time and due to wonderful technology. I would like to turn reopen public comment and invite Jam to speak. Jam, you have the table or the floor?
Jam, you should have gotten an invite to unmute. That's star six.
So Mike, while we're waiting for Jam to reappear, do you mind if I direct a couple of questions back at the Brush Creek Master Plan in order to push forward with the location extent approval and review? Mike Kramer?
Yep, I'm nodding my head, sorry.
I am going to go directly from the Brush Creek Master Plan and just hold you to it for a minute. Page 13, to the extent possible, ensure that any road improvements will have minimum impacts the Brush Creek Wildlife Migration Corridor. So I would like to add to tonight's resolution that, that according to Ed and Vardy, we will use either gravel or crusher fines. And again, you're going to need Aspen fire approval as well, I'm assuming. Or if this is deemed, you know, Picken County is going to need to approve it. But the goal, I guess, in my addition to the resolution or addition to the recitals would be you don't end up with hardscape on the south end, you know, within 50 feet of Brush Creek. So really, I'm just keeping you to the master plan and what the applicant said. It sort of began the change from 2018 that, that is that we're, that we're highlighting. And then I guess a question on your conservation easement, again, I'm calling out the conservation easement because it's on page eight of the Brush Creek Master Plans. I'm sticking with, keeping you to the master plan. In there, AVLT is granted, allows one agricultural structure and one housing unit. And I don't see how we're with this growth and this development in 2021 that we're in accordance with the AVLT Conservation Easement. So I'll have you look at both.
Yeah, thanks for the comments on the access. We're comfortable with the idea of doing a non-hardscape. So if we would need to put in the resolution, you know, not blacktop or not concrete, is that where you're getting at, Jeffrey?
Yeah, I just don't want the city to come back and say, or the fire department come back and say, it's got to be wrapped. And all of a sudden, we're looking at this beautiful ag space with the conservation easement. And from the highway, you see blacktop and it looks like a city. So again, I think we all are aligned on this call, but I'm just a little, you know, my chagrin at the delta between 2018 and 2021 is where we keep building roads and on farmland close to this beautiful riparian corridor. So stop it. And you know, the only thing I have going for me from, from how I can keep you to this task is page 13. And again, to the extent possible, ensure that any road improvements will have minimum impacts to the Brush Creek Wildlife Migration Corridor. So yes, I'd be happy with amending the location extent to include that you will not use hardscape. And again, I think Ed believes that, but I would like to codify it in this location extent review.
Yeah, he's comfortable with that. We just want to make sure that just acknowledge and put on the record that we need to make sure that if fire, the fire district is comfortable with that too. We don't want blacktop. We don't want concrete in that area either. And I just want to clarify that that, so that would be the, the condition. You did mention something about the 50-foot setback from Brush Creek.
I mean, ideally, you know, if you were a homeowner and you were building in Brush Creek, we'd keep you 100 feet back. So you're already both your, I think your new structures and existing are within 100. And the road is within, within 50, according to your site plan.
Yeah, and I can clarify that too, that the site plan, actually, we've cited the new learning center 100 feet from Brush Creek High Watermark. So you know, if we were looking at the code, it would be compliant. And you know, we correctly put the 50-foot setback on there too. And that access road does touch within that 50-foot setback. But I want to be clear too, that, you know, if we're going to look at the land use code, which I don't think we're supposed to.
No, that's why I said I'm on the master plan. I'm not going anywhere else.
Yep, there is an exception for, for, you know, development of roads and bridges and the setbacks. So you know, we aren't inconsistent with the land use code. So we'd like to, we'd like to keep the location as we're showing. And we're certainly comfortable doing the, you know, no blacktop, no concrete.
Great. And then the other question was page eight includes the AVLT Conservation Easement. And again, AVLT states one agricultural structure and one housing unit. And this is in the 2003 master plan citing the AVLT Conservation Easement on Cozy Point. So it seems like your development's inconsistent with your own conservation easement.
Well, I can say that, you know, we reached out to AVLT and they did provide a referral letter in the packet saying that we're not inconsistent with their Conservation Easement.
Yeah, I remember the double negative.
Yeah, it was interesting how they, how they. Yeah, it was interesting how they how they said that. So we 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 agree with that letter. And I will say that, you know, the one housing unit part of that statement. You know, the the two RV trailers that Eden is proposing, I don't think qualify as a unit or a density unit. They're seasonal, they're temporary, they're only there for the summer, they're not there permanently. So we don't take, we don't take the position that those are units or density.
Excellent. And the question for staff, and this is my last question for the evening, I hope. My question for staff, is there any other restriction in terms of, it seems like the the public feedback and public comments. Were with regards to traffic and events. Is there any change to the permit of special events? You know, with regards to the relationship between the city or excuse me, with between the county and and Eden, according to this LNA. And it's the question for Tammy. If I need to restate it, I'm happy to.
Yeah, so I think I'm understanding your question is what kind of permits they're going to need. So they definitely will need a permit for any special event for our land use code. Whether it comes from Eden or the city, you know, as long as the city's authorized, you haven't to hold that event. That's fine.
So I guess the question is, within the LNA, in accordance with the Brush Creek Master Plan, because it's the only thing we have to go on tonight. Are there any changes to the permit process for special events for the farm collaborative through tonight's approvals?
No, they would still they would still just get the, you know, traditional special event permit like everyone else.
Is Jam available? Again, apologies to Robert's rules. Jam has been patient and had public comment. Opening to public comment for Jam.
I think you might be referring to me.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Oh, yes. My name's Jerome Meister. I'm on the the Metro Board. And my concern is traffic as well, and in particular, the intersection of Juniper Hill Road. And Highway 82, and in particular, if you're heading down valley and making a left-hand turn. And that is a, in my opinion, a very dangerous situation when you're crossing a highway. And making a left onto Highway 82 because you're going directly on to the left-hand lane with left lane, which is the. High-speed lane. And there's no acceleration lane on the opposite side of the highway. There is an acceleration lane. But without an acceleration lane, and if you have a high-traffic situation from a special event. And it's in a. A high-traffic period, that could be a very dangerous situation. And that just adds to my concerns as expressed by Lawson as well. And I think at some point, there needs to be some. Plan to try and deal with that side of the intersection and having an acceleration lane. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you for your patience in 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 joining us this evening. Apologies for the technology. I will turn it back if Bill wanted to touch on anything else in regards to.
Jeff. Jeff, if I could just amplify what the gentleman just said. It is so hard to get across that highway in the morning if you're going down valley. That all it takes is one car trying to get across the highway to. Create a backup of cars, even though there's an acceleration lane going up valley. You can't get to the acceleration lane if there's one car blocking the intersection trying to cross the highway.
Any other commissioner questions, comments for staff or the applicant?
This is Monty again. Yeah, you know, I think that traffic intersection, whether Cozy Point progresses further, what we're doing or not. Is one of the major concerns. Everybody has Woody Creek or Rush Creek. And hopefully through this process of of buildings Cozy Point up. That it brings more emphasis to it. Maybe the state and the county can get together and. Because acceleration lane up valley does really help, but there is something that has to be probably done there. And so I kind of look at this with Cozy Point as something that maybe will help. Bring attention to that and get get it done sooner. But but one of the things that we talked about in 18 and through the years of doing Cozy Point with this. You know, agricultural influence on it is that it's something we really want to do and we really make a point here of Aspen. So I think we brought this up in 18. One of the reasons we we really support this project is because it brings something other than just a quest. Equestrian there and the fact that we are showing that we can sustain ourselves. And it's it's a way of the future that I think that that is really important. So I know what I've been listening to here and and through 18, I've been a pretty strong supporter of this. And I think that, you know, my comments to it's been a great presentation. And I'm hoping that we can find a way to push this on forward.
Any other commissioner or questions for staff or the applicant?
I have one comment. A question for anyone that wants to answer. My only concern right now is with the retail stand and the traffic that they may create. By selling produce at a retail stand. You know, even if they are not allowed to put a sign on 82. That doesn't stop them from running ads in the newspapers and that this becomes during parts of the year. Real generator of traffic. None of these, there's no limitations to what that retail operation can be. And that's my only concern right now, that there's nothing concrete spelled out. That would prevent it from becoming the next major contribution to traffic.
Well, and to comment on Cliff's observation, I think a lot of that depends on what the retail operation looks like. If it's just a produce stand like what we used to have in the buttermilk parking lot. That that didn't generate a whole lot of traffic. But if they're selling more than fresh produce, if they're getting into canned goods and jams and other things. Then it becomes more like a grocery store.
So at this point, I would, if I see no further commissioner comment or questions. I would turn to page 23, which includes the recitals. I know, Mike, you wanted an opportunity to talk about the resolution and the recitals. I would like to strike bullet point one, page one, which is improving the access road use for agricultural operations to meet fire standards. And. And replace that with improve the access road. I really don't want to improve the access road. I'd like to strike it. Again, there's no referral comments from either. Pitten County Roads nor Aspen Fire Protection District in this. I'd like to just strike it. Unless you would like to leave something in that says. You know, no hardscape, no rap, no asphalt, no concrete, only softscape that would include gravel or crusher fines.
We're okay with the condition of approval like that, Jeffrey.
So moved. And you you had some questions in terms of the recitals?
Yeah, we would. Yeah, if it's all right, if this is the appropriate time, we'd like to go over the activities of. And sorry, the permit for development in areas of state interest resolution. We really don't have any concerns with the LNE resolution, but this one has conditions that we'd like to talk through and possibly consider changes to.
So let's um, let's do it just to bifurcate the evening even more. And to the annoyance of Robert's rules, do you mind if planning zoning votes real quick on LNE? And then we will, that'll leave us the unfinished business of the permit and the Fonzie.
That's okay with us.
Excellent. So at this point, I would entertain a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Pitten County, Colorado. Finding the Farm Collaborative Learning Center at Cozy Point Ranch, location and extent review. Inconformance with the 2003 Brush Creek Master Plan. As amended, the amendment is to recital one bullet one, which is we are striking improving. The access road use for agricultural operations to meet fire standard, fire district standards. Since no referral letter from the fire district nor from Pitten County Roads was was in the packet. The applicant has agreed to either gravel and or crusher fines, but no hardscape, no rap and no concrete. So at this point, I would look at a motion for approval of the recite, oh, sorry, of the resolution and the recital as amended.
I I would like to make a motion for approval per clarifications that. And recitals that Jeffrey just went through.
I was second.
First from Jim and a second from Jasmine, all of those in favor. I can't see your hands, so Monty.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Jasmine.
Yes. Yes.
Any other commissioners on the line who joined later, I think Zach maybe on the line.
Jeff, this is Zach and I vote yes.
And the chair is, yes, we have six and it's unanimous. So we're through. Ed, we're through one of two. Bear with us. We're through the location extent and now we're moving on to. Happy days. We're moving on to the Fonzie application, which is page 27. And in there, I will not read the resolution at this time because I'm not looking for a vote, but I'll turn the floor back to Mike Kramer. Which is to discuss the recitals as outlined by staff. So if you have any questions, Mike, for staff and or the planning commission regarding the recitals for the for the Fonzie.
Okay, thanks, Jeffrey. Yeah, we'll go through them. I'm reading off just some changes that we're going to propose. But one of the things we wanted to talk about was that, you know, we identify and acknowledge that the county is called the city of Aspen, the applicant. And then through the less see the farm collaborative, you know, we've made this representation and application. But I think it'd be good, maybe if the county staff could just. Provide some definition for Ed and maybe for the city and how they view the conditions of approval will play out. And the reason I bring it up is because there's certainly conditions of approval that apply to what Eden is going to do. For example, submit for a building permit. You know, the city of Aspen is not going to do that. It's going to be Eden with their authorization. And then there's some other. Conditions that are in regard to outside of Eden's lease area. And those kind of more speak to the city of Aspen. So we're just maybe wondering if we could get to some comments on on how the draft resolution is is prepared.
So I'm going to throw that back to Tammy and or Suzanne.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer it, but also I think that Ry Neely is online and I think he might be more. Appropriate to answer that question for us.
I mean, so ultimately. The property owner, which is the city of Aspen, is. Responsible for compliance with any condition of approval that is. Conditioned on the application. So if Eden's making a commitment, that is great. And I fully anticipate he will follow through on that. But if it comes to enforcement, the enforcement action is ultimately against the city. And then their relationship between the city and Eden probably will handle that circumstance. But as far as the county goes, our enforcement mechanism is always against the property owner regardless of the ownership status. So that's what that looks like.
Okay, thanks for that. So a couple of things on the reso, we're just just a cleanup item on recital number one. It references location and extent review, and I think this one was for areas of state interest review. So maybe we want to make that change. We agree, I think you probably wanted, going to be consistent with the LNE reso, Jeffrey, for that first bullet point on number one. So we agree to that change. The. Eighth bullet point down, I think I'm counting correctly, eight. It talks about the total square footage of 4,000 square feet. And what we'd like to represent is 8,800 square feet as we showed in our application. And then with the ability to reduce the basement floor area and make minor design changes that are consistent with our representations tonight.
Anything else, Mike? I'm going to go back to Tammy to make sure she's okay with those changes.
Okay. And then if I can direct your attention to a couple of the conditions of approval. And this is probably a a point where maybe the city of Aspen might want to participate in this discussion, too. And Austin and you guys are, you're still on the line there. So one of the things that we heard tonight, and as we got, you know, referral comments from the Brush Creek Metro District about. You know, road improvements to Juniper Hill and cost sharing and all those things. We noticed that three A, condition three A. Requires a cost-sharing agreement be executed between the property owner and Brush Creek Metro. And from Eden's perspective, this is a, this is problematic. And not that we don't think that, you know, the two parties can talk and come to some type of, you know, discussion platform. But we're concerned that there's no timeframe for it, and there's a lot of variables that go into an agreement and discussion like this. So this one's problematic for us. And I think what you heard tonight from the city is that they're willing to open up discussions with the Metro District. So with that, that's the point I wanted to bring up. And if the city wanted to add anything on that, please do so.
Austin. Anyone the city of Aspen want to chime in regarding the Metro District and roads?
Sure, this is Matt Kuhn.
Hey, Matt, thank you.
Our comment earlier, just prior to public comment summarized that we're we're willing and open to enter into those. Discussions and conversations. There is an existing easement agreement that's been in place since 1992. And as staff, we we need time to review that closely. To our knowledge, the the terms of cost sharing have not been followed. And so we need to look into that further and to summarize what Mike was saying, you know. That timeline is separate from Eden's building permit application. And there is our intent to to go down that route. But just don't agree that it should be contingent on Eden's permit here for the farm collaborative.
Tammy, any follow-up conversation or discussion on any of Mike's points to this point? Otherwise, I'm going to let him continue.
I mean, I understand that that point. I think the reason we added that it be with the building permit is so that there was some kind of, you know. Timeframe for that to occur. I don't know if everyone's. Or how the commissioners feel about maybe extending it to time of CO. I think there's flexibility there, but. We definitely want to put some kind of timeline on that. So it's not just totally open-ended.
Matt or or Mike, I would agree with Tammy. So it's not. I understand the logic of not tying up farm collaboratives growth and and building. But I also want to push the city to have the conversation with the Metro District. So is there middle ground that you would accept for Mike?
Yeah, we we certainly, thanks, Jeffrey, and thanks, Tammy, for that. We certainly understand that that position. However, you know, Eden is not a party to those discussions. He doesn't have any authorization to, you know. Act on behalf of the city with discussions with the Metro District. And it's really open-ended and it makes Eden very nervous that an agreement won't come to fruition. And if it doesn't, then, you know, he can't submit for a building permit or he can't get a CO. And as you could probably imagine, as someone trying to push a project through, that's a big concern. So I think what's really promising tonight is that the city of Aspen has said that they'll enter into good faith discussions with the Metro District. But it's very problematic to tie this to a CO or building permit submission because Eden doesn't have control over any of it.
I'm going to, I'm going to turn the table back to Ry because he again pointed to the city of Aspen as the. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the table back to Ry because he again pointed to the city of Aspen as the um, the lease or and the ultimate in terms of this agreement. Rod, do you have any further words of wisdom in terms of good faith discussions?
Jeff, Jeffrey, this is Suzanne, actually, I was gonna jump in and suggest, you know, one thing might be, since this does have to go forward to the BOCC for final approval of the permit. Um, we could make this that basically at B O C, you know, a condition at B O C that at that point, you know, we we have some other timeframe that the applicant can propose um for these conditions. If it's not tied to permit, if they can, you know, have more discussions between at that point between Brush Creek and the city and maybe start to come up with some idea of, you know, what that might look like. So we could attach some different timeframe to it. Um, so it could be, you know, sort of a condition written to, you know, you know, prior to BOCC approval. You know, the applicant shall, you know, or the city shall, you know, some something along those lines. Um, which does push it, but it buys a little time to come up with a different timeframe that might not tie it to the permit.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest the same thing, I think um what Suzanne suggested makes sense and now we are obviously can't tie the hands of the metro district in uh this particular approval, so. If that's okay with the PMZ, I would suggest that Suzanne's uh amendment would be a good one. And I'm up with the plan from there.
Commissioner Chair, can I just make a a quick request on that?
Yes, please, Ed.
Um, Suzanne, would you be amenable to uh to 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 maybe shifting the resolution that the city will it will come up with a timetable to initiate conversations in good faith? Um, my concern is that uh, as as we heard tonight, there's members of the of the metro district that would like to see a traffic light. As this is currently written, you know, we may, we may get to a place where Brush Creek says until we have a traffic light, we're not agreeing to anything. Or I mean, I I I I believe they've been negotiating in good faith, but currently as it stated, this application cannot move forward until members of the uh Brush Creek Metro District are in support of it. And um, and while we wanna be good neighbors, we also have a lot of hesitation around, um, you know, limiting our capacity to actually move forward with this project until this particular negotiation is finalized. Is is there a way that we can explore it where it's stated as uh initiate i- in a good faith uh discussion? Um, or something that that doesn't necessarily, you know, bind the city um to come up with an agreement? Because in in this situation, it would, it would put um, you know, it would really kind of force our hands uh i- in an area that we may not be able to to ever come up with in this project, you know, may not be able to move forward.
So I guess the question's back for um Tammy and Suzanne. Um, if we pull the word agreement and we have something along the helping verbs line that is uh could or should initiate a a timetable would be one option or two is we just push this down the road and and hand it over to the elected officials for the next meeting. Do you have a preference?
I mean, I I certainly understand Eden's concern and right that we're not trying to, you know, insist upon how this gets. I g- I guess, I I think it would be just help to have an update in at the BOCC and and maybe it does make sense to just, you know, talk about, change the language to be more initiating rather than, you know, a finalized agreement, um, having that in place. I don't, I don't, I I don't have that language on the the top of my head right now. But um, but I think we could work on on something that captures that as the condition to be considered by the BOCC.
You would appreciate that um, that context and that sentiment. City guys, are you okay with that um, with this proposal for language?
I don't know that I have a a bit of language to to summarize. Is there, can we get the the summary that that is uh moving to BOCC, maybe a quick sentence?
Mike, what do you have drafted?
Well, um, I wanna make sure that um what Suzanne is saying and what gets in the resolution that the city of Aspen is also comfortable with. But the context is that um we're hearing that good faith discussions will be initiated, that we prefer them not to be tied to a building permit or a certificate of occupancy. And that at the BOCC, we'll provide an update with uh some type of uh discussions plan where we can represent some timeframes. Am I capturing that correctly, everybody?
Yeah, I think the only, I I hear the disagreement, I'm not, I'm not saying, sorry, I hear the delta between staff and applicant as they really wanna keep you time-bound. And um, so we're all on the same page in terms of good faith initiatives. And um, but I I don't hear staff appreciating the removal of not tying it to a CO or building permit at this point.
Hey Tammy, where exactly in the resolution, are we at three A right now? I mean, one thing you could do is break, uh, you can create that three A. If that's the only of those items A through H and three, you could create three A uh separate and apart. And then I guess I'd note that the uh next paragraph is a two, which probably isn't uh assuming you have the same packet that you all have. I'd break out that three A and do like uh recommend uh with the building permit application for the Farm Center, recommend that the applicant do uh three A or recommend to the BOCC that the applicant do three A. And then create a four, paragraph four, that includes the rest of those uh recommendations B through H. Yeah, exactly, thanks, whoever put that up, that's excellent. Breakout three A, make that a recommendation to the BOCC uh that they establish a timeframe for doing that. And then create a new paragraph four with B through H of three, the current three A being uh new new conditions of approval. And then obviously we gotta update the numbering because that's a little uh screwy. I think that would work, obviously I defer to Suzanne and Tammy. Make sure that works with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I think I was seeing it as a standalone condition that would with the PMZ's recommending that when this goes to the BOCC, that basically we're asking for additional information on the timeframe or initiation or, you know, something to refine that to bring to the BOCC for their, them to discuss. How they, the timeframe related to that, so, but separate.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Relation related to building permit.
So, sorry, just to make sure that 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 I understand, the the suggestion would be at time of BOCC that we bring a timeframe for initiating good faith negotiations with the um, with the uh Brush Creek Metro District. Um, but not connecting that there is a resolution from that uh hindering the capacity to occupy the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think what I'm uh suggesting, and Suzanne can help me with this, but I'm suggesting that uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight recommend that the Board of County Commissioners establish a timeframe for for this predict particular condition three A, what is currently styled as three A. So I'd push, I'd have the Planning and Zoning Commission support a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners that there be some kind of uh evaluation of the timeframe for establishing some kind of agreement on the proposed use of Juniper Hill Road.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think we're looking right now for a time for it to be resolved. The BOCC may wanna say, you know, okay, we'll give you time to get this started, but come back to us in a year and tell us where this, you know, again, that we may wanna think about other timeframes to to tie it to. I think for now, we're just saying, right, we at least wanna know at the BOCC what it looks like to get this process moving. Um, and then kind of go from there.
That's what I'm suggesting as well.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, the farm collaborative team is okay with that, but we need to make sure the city of Aspen is okay with that condition too.
I I think we're generally okay with that. And and I do wanna ensure that we know that there's an existing agreement in place, a recorded easement agreement. And so any revisions to that would uh be subsequent to the the cost sharing agreements and the the formula, formula that is prescribed in that uh existing agreement.
Okay, and that that point is definitely duly noted, I think um to the extent that the current easement agreement covers this area, uh, we can present that to the Board of County Commissioners, so. I would propose that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that there isn't a that there's a recommendation for this agreement going to the Board of County Commissioners, but we also work with staff to evaluate that current easement agreement, Matt, if that works for you.
Yeah, we need to spend some time internally with our staff and with the city attorney to review the the existing easement and it's
That's fine, and I I have never, I've never seen that easement agreement, so um you know, to the extent that covers it, then may I can, we can make that recommendation to the BOCC at the time.
Mike Kramer, any further comments with regards to uh the Fonzie recitals?
Yeah, few few more, thanks Jeffrey. Um, so the other one we wanna bring up is condition three D. It talks about closure of the access off Highway eighty-two, that's the ranch access um that enters Cozy Point. Um, you know, we certainly are aware, as is the city, of the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Aspen and SEDO and Picking County that calls for this closure. The timeframe for implementing the closure of that is problematic at building perm, uh, final building permit inspection. So um, if um we could, um, we could, I'd like for the city possibly to um comment on this topic because it is outside the lease area for Eden. But we are saying that we are aware of the IGA and and know that at some point it has to be closed.
Sorry, so the three D is what we're talking about now, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
We feel that uh this should be struck from the resolution that we understand that we have timing needed to close that access road. Uh, at the city of Aspen, we need to uh restart a, uh, I think Tammy said it best, a detailed site plan that we had started uh just prior to COVID hitting, and we've since pushed pause on that due to COVID and some budget uh constraints. We're anxious to get that started again, uh, but we don't know when exactly that'll happen. But you can imagine that by closing this access road, we need to provide improvements interior to the site, and we need plenty of time to work through that. Uh, and so we do not feel that this is the right place uh to hold Eden up until we can, we can do that comprehensive planning process.
Yeah, me. Or Suzanne?
I mean, again, it's it's kind of the same scenario, it's I've heard from both the engineer and the planning engineer, um, and I believe Brush Creek Metro District that, I mean, this this has been known for quite a while and we're not really seeing a, you know, a timeframe for this to occur, so. Um, I guess, you know, similar to what we did with condition three A, we could maybe push it to the BOCC to come up with a plan of of at least getting some kind of um proposal for a timeframe.
Well, and towards that end, I mean, if the Planning and Zoning Commission just wants to make a recommendation that uh a plan be implemented for the closure of the access road, that'll go to the Board Account, Board of County Commissioners and they can consider that. They can consider that recommendation, I don't know if you need a set a timeframe on that.
So, Ry, I didn't hear a change from the current three D in what you just said.
I think he can recommend.
There is pulling it out of a requirement at permit.
Exactly.
I guess maybe the question to Mike and Eden is, are there more of these um issues that you're concerned about the timing related to it happening at permit? Um, again, I think there will be a full discussion of, you know, I think there are concerns is certainly about that access point and having a brand-new building and all of these activities going on and that not being closed. I think that'll be a big issue for the BOCC, but if we wanna push this discussion to BOCC, I think we should identify all of the things that we think we need you all to better address. If you don't want the timing to be at permit, what timing I think is appropriate? And maybe for you all to work on that with the city before we go forward to the BOCC. Um, but it just seems like, yeah, I I I think we need to put it all on the table as to what the concerns are that you don't wanna have tied to your permit.
Yeah, we we understand that.
That makes sense, Suzanne, or I mean, they can simply pr- uh provide that they won't use the access road in connection with the infrastructure being proposed right now. I mean, I mean, they can do that too, so.
We, we would be okay with that, um, we we ha- we're willing to place a gate there. Maybe in conjunction with the completion of Eden's uh development while, and that would afford us some time to develop uh an interior access plan that meets fire and other things while removing this one at a later date.
And and I was just gonna add that this this particular access point, um, the reason we think a gate would work is it it is not considered a public access. So uh currently today, public is not technically allowed to to access the ranch that way. It's simply an operational access uh for staff to reach the the ranch office and the the ranch housing there. So that could uh, a gate would essentially physically sever any public um access into the property that way.
Well, Austin, that makes sense, so that can be a two-part appro, that can be a two-part addition to this if uh that works for the Planning and Zoning Commission, you can uh limit the use of that in connection with the current application. And you also submit a plan for potentially eliminating that if it's uh, you know, desirable in the future or something like that. Think as long as there's a commitment to not use it in connection with this uh proposed development, then that should cover it for now. And if putting a, I think putting up a great gate helps with that, so.
So so just to codify this, I'm hearing three D has been replaced with three parts and Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong, the access road will not be used in conjunction after the completion of the building. A gate will be installed um to the interior access road, so it'll sever any use by the public. And um, there's a third part and I can't read my left-handed scroll, um, submit plan to the county in the future in terms of the use of this road, and and maybe the third one I did not get correct, sorry. Tammy, three D?
Yeah, that that sounds about right, that's the beginning, so.
I think you can, the third part of that, Jeff, maybe it plans for the potential to eliminate the access onto Highway eighty-two. You know, it sounds like uh Austin has expressed some limited use that may be desirable in connection with the city of Aspen's current operations on the property. I would think if there's a a gate installed that has access for only certain people, whether that's a locked gate or not, there's potential that if they, you know, need to move some equipment onto the property or something like that, that requires them to use that, then they can do that. then they can do that. Otherwise, it can't be used in connection with proposed development or for general public access to the property.
Mike and Austin, I assume you're shaking your heads yes?
Farm Collaborative was okay with that. Jeffrey, just a couple other points. If I will, if I may, Condition twelve says, "The applicant shall determine an appropriate maximum cap of traffic generation allowed for the Cozy Point Ranch and shall manage Cozy Point Ranch as to not exceed the established cap." This condition is also, I think, problematic, and I can let the city speak to it, but basically, I don't think that there is an established maximum cap for traffic generation today for the whole ranch, and certainly they don't want to establish it. Well, I shouldn't speak for the city, I'll let them do that, but they may not want to establish a maximum cap through this resolution because they don't know what future uses are going to happen out there, but I'll let the city speak to that point.
I think that's a pretty close summary, Mike. I think we feel that this should be struck entirely that the the resolution that's stated now is not referencing what road we're analyzing. And that, I think we're all presuming that that is Juniper Hill Road and that it's looking for maximum traffic generated associated with Juniper Hill Road. And to that point, referencing that earlier easement that we discussed, I think that limiting ourselves or essentially reviewing something that we're not quite into yet in terms of our discussions with the Brush Creek Metro District on the thing that this presumes that we're reaching a cap. I don't know if that's the most clear comment, but Austin or Mike or John, if you guys can clarify my sentiment there.
No, thanks, Matt, and we just have concerns, as Matt indicated, about what the future of the ranch holds. And, you know, certainly as Eden referenced already, that his lease has some caps of use already built into it, and we would rely on that lease to kind of, in our enforcement of the lease, quite rightly, to be that mechanism.
Tammy, Suzanne, or Ryan?
I think you're basically reinforcing the reasoning for that condition in that, right, you don't know the future, you know, impacts of the ranch, and so that's where that came from, is that at least by putting on a cap, you're going to create some kind of understanding of what that future holds. But I think that's up for for discussion for sure.
Yeah, Tammy. Land Use Code twelve forty-one fifty-two requires that the application consider that this location consider community, make sure that community traffic needs are met, so. You know, we can probably word it so that it's tied with Condition thirteen, which requires a traffic audit.
So, Ryan, can I just chime in and say land use code doesn't apply? We really have to go back to the Brush Creek Master Plan for location extent? Or you're telling me this is building permit, so we could bring L U C back in?
Well, I'm talking about the standards for areas around.
State interest.
Areas of state interest. I'm sorry, I think I added the wrong section, it's twelve forty-one hundred. So. But like I said, I think you can tie in Condition thirteen potentially to establish that level of traffic usage.
Ultimately, I think from the city's perspective, we're unprepared in this format to support Resolution number twelve and thirteen. I think we need to really dig into the existing easement agreement to better understand the terms of that easement that is granted to the Brush Creek Landowners Association for access across the City of Aspen parcel. Before we can comment on future maximum traffic generated and also committing to annual traffic audits. You know, our traffic studies have not been completed to date with reference to these questions, and so we do feel that this ties to 3A and that our hope and intent is to allow Eden to continue his process of the Farm Collaborative Center while recognizing that the City of Aspen is well-intentioned to work with Brush Creek Metro District moving forward to first review the existing agreement, determine what needs to change in that, and then we can start looking at these other elements that might be a bit more fine-tuning. And I do want to say in general, across Cozy Point Ranch, we don't anticipate developing, and in fact, the discussion easement was brought up earlier, and that precludes gross development and large generation of traffic, and so, you know, from our intent, it is not to grow the operations, and we recognize that by consolidating this Farm Center Collaborative, Eden is increasing, and I think Bill Fox referenced twenty or forty vehicles per day that will increase by this consolidation of his operations into one building. And so this is not a new use on the property as nor is the Equestrian operations. Those are all existing uses. This is a consolidation on his property for, you know, a better center that allows for continued programming as he's been doing for a number of years.
So, Mike and Matt, if, just for the sake of time and understanding this is a two-step review process in deference to staff and legal and planning comments, at this point, unless Commissioners object, I'd like to leave twelve, thirteen, and fourteen in there. This gives you time to properly address and and clarify, you know, what the City of Aspen is willing to do in terms around the neighborhood and the Metro District concerns around traffic and growth. So it's pushing the can down the table, but it's leaving them in the resolution this evening. Mike, you had one final comment potentially?
No, potentially went away. I'm done commenting. Yep.
Commissioner, real quick, my understanding is the intent from staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, with this particular resolution that we've been speaking about or this condition, is to make sure that we're not, you know, growing our operation in an unreasonable way that's going to impede the neighborhood. Is that accurate?
Leave that for staff.
If that is the intent, I mean, might it be enough to state in the resolution that the Farm Collaborative, you know, will not exceed the occupancy limits that are set forth in our lease agreement with the City of Aspen? Because that clearly and expressly states what our limitations are on the site and doesn't tie the hands of the city with, you know, with uses that are outside of this proposed project and facility.
Tammy, Suzanne, or Ryan?
I think there are two things. I mean, I think we are looking at the Farm Collaborative specifically as well as the bigger picture. You know, I think there are two things intended through those conditions, and maybe they can be refined and improved, but, you know, I do think we're looking to see how the city weighs in on some of these things where the bigger pictures of, you know, the horse operation has been out there for a long time. It's nothing that the county's ever looked at and how big it is and how many traffic trips it generates and how that ties in. You know, we're looking at this now because of your new facilities, but the Farm Collaborative has grown over time. We haven't been able to evaluate that as it has grown as well. So part of this is looking at that bigger picture with the city as the owner of the property as to what, you know, what all is that, what is that maximum, what, you know, how many trips are we generating? So I think that is part of the issue we're trying to get at through this review of the areas of state interest, so it's both your operation as well as the bigger picture.
Austin, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Thanks, Jeffrey. You know, I just just thinking here that, you know, certainly a concern is that we, you know, today, we don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, we don't have solid data as to what the percentage of users on that road are Brush Creek Metro District versus Equestrian versus and Tom Newland shaking his head, maybe we do have that information, but, so that's going to certainly inform you know, that conversation about what, if any, sort of caps there need to be for the ranch itself.
So we do have data that the counts that Brush Creek Metro did were on both uphill and downhill sides of the two driveways into Cozy Point. So we have data by subtracting those two numbers to know that at that time how much traffic went in and out of the site. We don't know how many of them were pulling horse trailers, and we don't know how many went to ride a horse versus going to the Farm Collaborative. But we do have total data on the amount of traffic of the six hundred and fifty-five trips that are on Juniper Hill Road, how much of it went into the Cozy Point.
All right, here's what I would do. I would strike Condition number twelve in its entirety. If the Planning and Zoning Commission is amenable to that, in what is currently Condition thirteen, I would remove the first part that says, "As programs and use levels evolve", I would take that and just have it start, "The applicant shall conduct an annual traffic audit", and then at the end of that Paragraph thirteen, after measured, I'd say, or measures, I'd say, "And establish traffic generation caps if appropriate", is what I would do. I think that covers the staff's intent and gives the city some leeway to present their studies and/or the allowed uses under their easement moving forward. I can say that again if anybody would like me to.
And can I just add some, or add a quick question to that? So that doesn't have any sort of end date to it. It's an infinite sort of traffic, ongoing traffic study. It seems like as programmed increases to Cozy Point Ranch are proposed, then that may trigger the need for a further analysis, but an ongoing every single year analysis of that traffic seems like an inappropriate use of funds and time.
Well, I think that's fine. I mean, we oftentimes have annual reviews for various uses. I guess I would leave it up to staff to determine whether it's more appropriate to do that on an annual basis or whether it's more appropriate to do that when new uses are established, or if it's more akin to some of our master planning functions where we reevaluate those things every five years or something like that. I'm not a planner, but that's what I would suggest as far as removing Paragraph twelve and adding to the end of thirteen, establishing traffic caps is appropriate. I guess I would leave it up to the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommendation as to the timing of those particular triggers.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion, Ryan. In terms of, right again, the timeframe, like you said, you know, five-year could be possible, or, right, if, you know, every time a new development permit is submitted, we have the city do assessment. I think that could work as well.
Well, define it. I mean, the fact of the matter is every time they come in for a new use, the same conversation is going to be had, whether it's in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners or at staff level. This particular property is always going to be constrained by access to the highway until some major infrastructure improvement is made. So I guess I'd leave it up to the Planning and Zoning Commission or staff to recommend whether that annual, whether that traffic audit is conducted annually on a five-year basis, a ten-year basis, or every time a new use is proposed for the property. That new use standard seems a little loosey-goosey to me, but, you know, if you guys want to do that, go for it.
Tammy or Suzanne?
I think I'm starting to run out of ideas. You know, I think it's reasonable. I just don't know that I know what the answer is, you know, what's appropriate. In other cases where we've known what specific new projects might come online with the Aspen Mountain Master Plan where, you know, if they're going to, you know, replace a facility, at that point, we want to look back at some of their generation, you know, different things like that. I don't know how to tie it in here, so to keep it simple, I mean, I get that annual sound seems like overkill, but is it, you know, one year after they get the C O for the Farm Center and then every three years thereafter? You know, again, maybe that's a place to start. And again, maybe just to put something in for now, and the applicant can think a little bit more about, you know, what a better suggestion might be by the time we go to the B O C C. But again, I think, right, the point there is we do want to be capturing some, you know, some auditing of traffic over time so we can see what the patterns are and what that might trigger. So again, I'm just not sure what that magic number is, but maybe that's a place to start.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Suzanne. I think we've used that in the past, you know, you do one year after the C O, so you can actually see what's happening, and then you can adjust that afterward to establish a more realistic timeframe afterward.
Mike, are we good?
I think so.
So I'm hearing that we didn't strike twelve, thirteen, or fourteen. I'm hearing, I heard Austin's concerns about the financial burden to the city and/or the applicant. But I also hear staff saying, you know, normal, for example, like a redwood or redstone castle or something has a one-year, three-year is what I'm hearing on the floor right now in terms of traffic review studies. So sometime after C O and sometime in the future. Just again, so we're cognizant of the fact that we're still conforming to the Brush Creek Master Plan and meeting the requirements of the Brush Creek Metro District. So I think that's the concern on the table.
Jeffrey, Ryan did recommend striking number twelve.
So thirteen and fourteen are staying with the caveat of annual view of various uses, one year after C O and three years. Three years, hence.
Yeah, and I would add the end of thirteen and establish annual traffic caps if appropriate.
So approve traffic audit and establish traffic caps if appropriate.
Jeffrey, I just want to quick check in with Eden.
Sorry, I don't.
Eden, are you comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think really it's the city that, Mr. Chinon.
Okay, and that was my next question was. Okay, and that was my next question was city, and if we need to, you know, I'm not sure if the city needs time to think about it or anything, but.
Yeah, I think we could use time to think about it, but in general concept, the idea of establishing a baseline, a one-year after CO with subsequent review after three years is a concept that we could go with. And I appreciate striking 12 because I do feel we need to establish some sort of cap subsequent to that baseline following the CO. But with the caveat that I think we would like to review some draft language as this gets solidified.
Good. Mike Kramer, anything further?
Nothing from the Farm Collaborative, thanks, Jeffrey.
Anything final from staff, legal? It's 8:14, I appreciate everyone hanging in there, I appreciate going through all this this evening. On page, page 27 of the package, we have a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Pittin County, sorry, any, I should say, any further commissioner questions or comments before I recite the resolution and modifications to the recitals? So, and I appreciate at this point Giles and Roland and Broton and the whole team that stuck through this. Jake from the city, thank you for your time and support this evening and going through this, apologies, we're going through a planning document. It is, we have a resolution on page 27 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Pittin County, Colorado, recommending that the Board of County Commissioners grant a permit for development in areas of state interest for the redevelopment of the Farm Collaborative Learning Center at Cozy Point Ranch. There are a number of updates to the recitals, which again, the beautiful YouTube will have captured more eloquently than I have, but the first one is the language on number one, the location extent actually should reflect that it's a Fonzie. Number two is the language for roads.
Hold on, hold on, there is no Fonzie, no Fonzie.
Sorry, I understand there was no Fonzie, sorry, the I understand that, that's why we're having this. Sorry. I understand Cindy did not sign the Fonzie, the applicant noted that on the recitals, I think the first thing was it should be approval for not location extent review, was what Mike pointed out on number one. So page 27, number one. To obtain approval for location extent review, that language is fine?
You know, the comment I made was, I think we meant to say that obtain approval for development in areas of state interest for the Farm Collaborative, yeah, so was it the LNE?
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct, sorry, sorry, Suzanne. So that is the first change to the recitals, thank you, whole team. The second one is the improving the access road should be consistent with the recitals of the location and extent review, that's the second change. Mike had mentioned that the number three, the floor area should change from a gross add of not 4,000 but 8,800, that's not the net add in terms of square footage. Number four, again, left-handed, so I might need help on this one. This was the separation of 3A from the further points, so 3A became its own bullet point, which was recommending additional frame, additional timeframe in good faith with the discussion with the Metro District, and again, the tape might have better language than I just threw out, but that was 3A, and then everything else would be 4B through H. And again, I think the Planning Commission, there was support that the B O C C established a timeframe for the conditions within 3A, and Suzanne or Tammy, any changes to what I just said so far?
Wow, that sounds accurate.
The next one should be Number 12, which has been struck. Number 13 is we discussed an approved traffic audit, which is an annual review of the various uses, one year after CO and three years subsequent review. We also added language that said establish traffic caps if appropriate. And so 13 and 14 then are modified, any other changes to the recitals? Mike, Tammy, Suzanne, Ry? Anything I did not capture?
I think the only thing you missed was the condition of approval 3D with respect to closure of the access road directly off Highway 82, I think we discussed.
So the new, thank you for that, so the new 3D would limit use, the access road would not be used in conjunction when the building is complete, we discussed a gate being installed, so that would make it an interior access road and sever public access, which it should not be a public road today. And we talked about submitting a plan potentially to eliminate access on Highway 82. Any changes, any other questions from staff or the applicant in terms of the recitals and the resolution?
Nothing from Farm Collaborative, we feel comfortable with that.
Mike, thank you so much, Edden, thank you for your time. Tammy, Suzanne, Ry, anything further with regards to the resolution? So at this point, seeing no further conversation or objections, I would entertain a, again, a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Pittin County, Colorado, recommending that the Board of County Commissioners grant a permit for development in areas of state interest for the redevelopment of the Farm Collaborative Learning Center at Cozy Point Ranch, again, with the caveats and additions that we just discussed in the recitals. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Monty.
I'll second, Jim.
Thank you, I have a first and a second, any further discussion at 8:21 PM on a Tuesday evening, early in January? Seeing no further discussion, I have a first and a second. All of those in favor, again, of the resolution of Planning and Zoning Commission of Pittin County, Colorado, recommending that the Board of County Commissioners grant a permit for development in areas of state interest for the redevelopment of the Farm Collaborative Learning Center at Cozy Point Ranch. Jasmine?
Yes.
Cliff?
Left.
Monty?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Jeffrey is a yes, Zach?
Yes.
We have five, we have a quorum, and we have a passed resolution. Again, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you to Edden, again, Roland and Broton, and Giles with Connect One for hanging through this, thank you to the City of Aspen, Austin and team, and Matt, and thank you for the entire staff, again, for hearing this in one session, I appreciate everyone pushing through to 8:22 PM. If there is no further business this evening, I'd be happy adjourning.
Dinner time.
Motion to adjourn, and Jake Mo, sorry, thank you for hanging in there for three hours and 22 minutes, I appreciate you joining the call and good to see you. So I know you've been involved in Cozy Point for quite a time, so. And Mike, good to see you, thank you for joining us, so again, motion to adjourn?
Motion, Monty.
Excellent. We're adjourned, and we do have a meeting the first Tuesday in February, it is it is the Aspen Skiing Company, and we're revisiting Pandora in Richmond Ridge on the first Tuesday in February, so look forward to seeing everyone then, and again, thank you to the City of Aspen for all of your work on this project and kind of leaving, you know, such a wonderful way to enter the City of Aspen is to go through an agricultural development, so I know, thank you for preserving and protecting open space right parian quarter as we go into the city, so thank you so much. Enjoy your evening, have a great night, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much.